Okay, great. All right, thank you for the patience, folks, appreciate it. We will now start our regular meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. Today's date is Thursday, December 7th. Item number one, Pledge of Allegiance, I will proudly lead the way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two, roll call. Michelle, please.
Harris Armstrong.
Here.
Manny Becerra.
Here.
Arthur Munoz is absent. Carrie Romeyer.
Here.
Alex Velto is here. Sylvia Villanueva.
Here.
And J.D. Draculich.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you. All right, moving on to item number three, Public Comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, I have one request to speak for him. Is that for a specific item? Or is that for this public comment?
The request to speak form that you received is for public hearing item.
Okay.
Number 5.1.
Okay, great, save it for then. Any other requests to speak forms?
Let me read this real quick.
Oh, please, sorry.
Okay, sorry. Members of the public may call into the meeting to provide public comment by using the Zoom link provided on the agenda specifically, https://links.rino.gov/planing12-07. It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the Planning Commission as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the Planning Commission agenda. Please note that the Planning Commission may not take action upon any matter not agendized for possible action on today's agenda. When you are called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name and you will be afforded three minutes. If you are an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment at this time, please raise your hand. Lastly, while in this room, please be respectful. Warnings will be issued by the presiding officer if there is disruptive behavior and you will be asked to leave chambers if the behavior continues. With that, we did receive correspondence that was general in nature, didn't pertain to anything on the agenda. That was forwarded to the Planning Commission and has been entered as part of the record. No voicemails were received. I did not receive any request to speak forms, and I do have somebody on Zoom that wishes to speak, I think. Patricia West.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Patricia West.
Hi, you have three minutes to make public comment?
I just wanted to introduce myself. I am Patricia West with the Children's Cabinet. I go by Patty West. I just wanted to let you know that I am just here to learn about planning committees, the planning and how it runs, because I am helping businesses and supporting them that are interested in having an onsite childcare, which right now in the state of Nevada, childcare is a need for all businesses, and so I am supporting them so that they can be able to have an onsite childcare for their employees. So I'm just here to learn about how the planning committee works, as I'm going to be supporting them, working with architects, planning, zoning, and all of that. So just wanted to introduce myself, so thank you.
Thank you. I think that's it for public comment.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else in the chambers wish to speak on general public comment? Please let us know. If not, you will have your chance for specific items. Seeing none, at the moment, we will close. Item three, Public Comment. Move to item number four, Approval of Minutes. Item 4.1, Reno City Planning Commission Regular Meeting of November 1st. Commissioners, any concerns or looking for motion?
I move to approve.
Commissioner Velto, sorry about that.
Commissioner Romeyer.
So we have a motion by Commissioner Romeyer. Commissioner Velto, feel free to second.
I would love to second.
We have a motion and a second. Looking for approval, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, minutes approved. Now moving on to item 4.2, Reno City Planning Commission Regular Meeting of November 16th.
Commissioner Villanueva, I motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. All right, motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, minutes approved. Thank you. Now moving on to item number five, Public Hearings. Any person who has chosen to provide his or her public comment when a public hearing is heard will need to so indicate on the request to speak form provided to the secretary. Alternatively, you may provide your comment when item three, Public Comment, is heard at the beginning of this meeting. We will open it up with item 5.1, Case Number LDC24-00018, Sutherland Family Fence. And will we get a presentation from the applicant? Great, thank you.
So do I have control? I do, okay. Hi, my name is Carrie Sutherland, and I'm the property owner, together with my husband, John, of 843 Marsh Avenue. And I'm here to give you a little bit more background about a fence that we're trying to build in our front yard. And there we go, okay. My husband and I purchased our property on New Year's Eve 2016, seven years ago, almost. We grew up in Reno and always went to U.N.R., and when we got married, dreamed to live in the old Southwest, and so this was definitely like the dream home purchase for us. In many ways, because the house has a really distinct and unique history. Since the 1940s, we purchased the home from the Catholic Diocese of Reno. Since the 1940s, it was purchased originally from Bishop Gorman, the namesake of the high school in Las Vegas, and since 1947 has served as the bishop's residence for the Diocese of Reno, which was just statewide, so it was the northern Nevada residence for the bishop until the 80s, and then the 80s was when the Diocese of Reno was established, and it became the permanent resident for the local bishop. So one single man has lived in this home since 1947. The home has a chapel. We have a statue of the saints in our backyard. We have a lot of historical and really important history that has been really important to me when it comes to renovating the house. So six years ago, I started renovating my house, and it's taken a really long time because I have put so much time and energy into renovations that honor the character and the history of the house. My goal has been to lift it into the century, but making changes to it that feel like they were always a part of it. And I think it's important to share some of this background, just because I want everyone to understand that it would never be my intention to do anything that would be out of character or, you know, just completely like left turn from what the house really is. So I provided some examples, like the photo on the left is actually the chapel, which has been renovated for our breakfast room. I had a church furniture maker in North Carolina make the altar chairs. The kitchen cabinets in the photo on the right are designed after like cathedral windows. I just think I wanted to include this to illustrate the point that I've been really careful and intentional about these choices, and my fence project is no different. I think most people that know about Marsh Avenue, that it's a really busy street. We welcome 3,000 trick-or-treaters on Halloween, like probably more if I didn't run out of candy by 8 o'clock. And it's a busy street in the old Southwest. It's kind of a cut-through street, and we'd like to have a fence. We want to have a fence to secure our property, to let the kids play basketball in the front yard. The front yard is a significant portion of our entire property, and we just, we'd like to use it. And I think having a fence would provide the safety and security that we want, but also be an architectural addition and enhancement that makes our home better, that makes our street better, and I think the whole neighborhood. So there are several tall fences throughout the old Southwest that go over this four-foot maximum that the city has, but there are a few reasons why we specifically need it to go over four feet. So just a little bit more about the design inspiration behind it. The photo, the large photo of the fence, is the inspiration photo I found that inspired my fence design. The curves that you'll see on my fence design are all really consistent with the architectural curves of the original house. I like the idea of, it's called a brick void pattern, of it being see-through. The fence will be made out of brick. It will, it's inspired by that image. It's not exactly that, which you'll see, but I want it to have some visibility. It's not my intention to have a fortress wall, so no one can see me or my house or my family again, and I can't see out either. To honor the history and the character of our house, I have a cross pattern, which is our brick void pattern. So the majority of the fence, which is over 50 feet in the center, is a brick void pattern, which is a cross, which is going to be subtle, but also, if you know, you know, and it's, I think, a nice touch. So there's multiple pictures of my fence that you're going to see. So first, if you just like take in the full view, if you're looking at my fence from the middle of the street, this is what you're going to see. The fence posts, obviously, on the ends, like any fence, are the tallest point. The actual fence itself, at its highest point, is 5'4". It slopes, it curves, it goes down to 3.6. You see the openings. I have a U-shaped driveway, which you may have noticed in the first picture, and it's that center section that features the brick void pattern in that upper third of the design. So just to give you a closer look, you can see I kind of pulled out just the left-hand portion of the whole fence. So like I said, the posts are 6'7 1/2" to be the exact height of my husband, because it's custom and I can make it whatever I want. And then it goes down to 5'4". It's 4'10", slopes down to 3'6", and then goes back to the post on either end of my opening of my driveway. The majority of that fence is the 51-plus-foot center section, and that's where the brick void pattern is. So there, some of the negative comments from the public, I think, are, it's a solid structure, maybe this ugly cinder block wall that's six feet tall. I won't be able to see your beautiful house again. I'm just quoting some of the letters. It's 4'10", so long as you're taller than 4'10", I promise you'll see my house, or peek through the holes. This is a scale rendering of my house with the fence layered in front of it. The reason for the 4'10" height of the majority of fence is so that it most closely aligns with the foundation of my house. So when you enter from Marsh Avenue to go up to my garage, the elevation change is five feet. So it is a significant, like it's an uphill drag, and that's why 4'10" actually lines up with the bottom of my house. So that's why I'm requesting the approval for a deviation. I think anything smaller than 4'10" would not be architecturally correct, and it's just not my intention to build something that isn't right. Some more visuals, just to illustrate, I mean, I don't know if anyone's driven down Marsh Avenue and noticed, but we've had this dirt plot in our front yard for two years while we've been planning this fence. The yellow tape represents the intent, the location of where the fence will go. You can see my SUV fits like cleanly between the street and the proposed fence. I'm a mom, I have two kids, a 13-year-old and a seven-year-old, and I'm not trying to create any sort of visual or safety issue. And that's also why I added the brick void pattern too, just to increase visibility. But my full car fits between the fence and the street. I mean, if you really want to know, my intention is to landscape in front of the fence and also to landscape behind it, so it's an eight-foot wide gap with the fence running through the middle. Our sidewalk on the larger photo to my right, it's harder to see, but our sidewalk is actually very rarely used because it's incomplete. It actually just dead-ends into a six-foot fence of my neighbor's property, so it's not a continued sidewalk, but I think that it's important just to point out, in terms of pedestrians, it's not really very, it's often used. Most people that walk down Marsh Avenue walk on the street. So I think approving this major deviation improves the safety and security of our private property. It will absolutely enhance the visual appearance of the built environment and an attractive streetscape. I think it ensures visual compatibility with public spaces and nearby architecture, and it promotes street and neighborhood character. I really appreciate your consideration, and I really appreciate John, a neighbor that's come to speak and support, and all the neighbors that send letters and support, and definitely Jeff, because he's helped me tremendously understand like what I'm even supposed to do to get to this point. So I'm happy to be here, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have about my fence.
Thank you. We'll get a presentation from the staff, and then we'll
Oh, great, okay.
Have a chance to ask you questions. Thank you. All right, we'll take a presentation from City of Reno. Hi, Jeff.
Hello, hello. All right, Jeff Foster, Associate Planner for the Record, tonight bringing you two cases, the first of which is LDC 2418, which is the Sutherland Family Fence. The project site is approximately 0.64 acres. It is a single-family home to the east of Reno High School on Marsh Avenue, and the request before you tonight is a major deviation to increase the allowable front yard fence from four foot to six feet, from four feet to six feet, which is a 50% increase as allowed by code under a major deviation. The key issues that we have are compatibility with surrounding land uses, as well as public safety. To point out, the home there, obviously in the yellow, and surrounded on all sides by single-family residential uses as well. The zoning district is single-family five, and the master plan is single-family neighborhood, and here are a few goals and policies that the project is in compliance with, and we can discuss those later if you would like. So the proposed design, as Carrie indicated, the home was built in 1946 and owned by the Catholic Diocese. It is located in the Newlands Historic District and is listed as a contributing property on the National Register of Historic Places Registration Form. I did want to point out that this designation is honorary and does not change any property rights, nor does it add restrictions for owners who may want to make changes to the property within the district. So acknowledging that it is in the Newlands District, that doesn't convey any additional restrictions as to what the applicant can do. The wall that is proposed varies in height between 3'6" and 5'4", with columns at 6'7 1/2", as Carrie indicated, with the brick void pattern that provides visibility and connects to the historical significance of the property. I did want to point out that per code, fence posts may extend up to two feet higher than the fence itself, as long as the posts are at least six feet apart, and that's why they can extend higher than the six feet as indicated there. Also, I think it's worth pointing out that the majority of the wall is actually only 4'10", as Carrie indicated, that the long stretch in the middle is 4'10", as well as some portions on the side, on either side. So we're not talking about a significant height differential above and beyond what is already allowed by code in a front yard. And then the height is due to the slope and topography of the property. The applicant has indicated that building a four-foot fence or wall would not provide the desired safety that they desire and the security that they desire, and also would not proportionally fit with the design, scale, and slope of the property. I do have another slide, should you want to see what the smaller wall could look like in relation to the property. I mean, I think you would agree that it doesn't match the scale and scope of the property based on the topography and the slope. As currently designed, the applicant is proposing a wall that exceeds the standard four feet by another 1'4", which is a 33% deviation. Of course, you, as the Planning Commission, may approve up to a 50% deviation, as we've already talked about, and to reserve the potential to build the wall taller than 5'4", the applicant is requesting the full 50% deviation. When the applicant applied, they did not understand that they couldn't apply for anything less than a 50% deviation, as again, as we point out, the maximum height is really only a 33% deviation. So that's what was noticed anyway, in terms of the full 50%. Okay. As far as compatibility with surrounding land uses goes, there are several nearby examples of front yard fences and walls taller than four feet. On the picture here, you can see six yellow pins that indicate at least some examples that are in the vicinity of fences and walls in front yards that are taller than four feet, and the applicant's home is where the orange dot and blue box are there. Here are photos of some of these fences and walls. No doubt, if you've traveled down California, you will recognize the one on the bottom. The one in the upper-left corner is actually diagonal across from the applicant's home on Marsh Avenue with a wall taller than four feet right in the front yard. Again, continuing with compatibility with surrounding land uses, since the property slopes up from the street, the top of the wall is at approximately the same level as the grade at the front of the house, as the applicant indicated, and the proposed wall would not be blocking the view of the house. And instead of a location on the property line, the wall is set back from the sidewalk, as the applicant indicated, with the yellow tape on the photo there. Therefore, that wall would, that fence and wall would not create a corridor alley effect because of the setback. There are several neighbors that are in support. The little picture here to the left, the six orange pins represent the neighbors who have submitted letters of support that are in the staff report. And as far as, we can routinely condition allowable days and hours of construction when there are sensitive land uses adjacent, and that's why we included Condition Number Five regarding allowable days and hours of construction. Regarding public safety, there were no concerns from RPD or the Reno Fire District. The brick void pattern does provide some visibility. Marsh Avenue is, in this location, a straight street, and with the proposed wall set back 18 feet from the street and from the sidewalk, there is sufficient room for a full-length vehicle to fit between the wall and the street, as shown in the photo. We did condition that to require the wall to be set back that far, so that we wouldn't have visibility or sight triangle issues with a wall closer to the street. And there are missing and out-of-compliance sidewalk panels on both sides of the driveway entrance, which present a safety hazard. Respecting that the existing sidewalk does dead-end in a fence, staff has conditioned, are suggesting a condition that require the missing and out-of-repair sidewalk panels to be replaced. Here are the major deviation recommended findings. I do want to take a second to run through these. I don't normally do this, but just because I think it's critical in this particular application to look at these in a little closer detail. The proposed wall would not create a sight distance or vision triangle issue for any properties, any neighboring properties. The taller wall would, will proportionally fit better with the scale and slope of the property. That's finding number two. Other taller walls are in the neighborhood, and other property owners could apply for a similar request, so it does not constitute a special privilege, finding number three. And the design does not create any safety issues due to the design and the location, so it will not be materially detrimental to the public health, safety, or welfare. Here's the recommended motion. Staff can make all the findings and recommends approval, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Jeff, appreciate it. We will now go to the Commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Villanueva, will you kick us off?
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the area and read emails.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the area, and I read and received emails.
Commissioner Becerra, same disclosures.
Commissioner Romeyer, resident of Marsh Avenue outside the notice area and read the emails.
Commissioner Draculich read and received emails and visited the site. All right, we will now open it up to
Commissioner Velto, same disclosure.
Oh, thank you, I forgot about you, buddy, go, I'm sorry.
No worries, thank you.
Thanks.
Same disclosures.
All right. Thank you, guys. All right, we will now open it up to public comment. We do have a request to speak form, gentleman by the name of John Hester, speaking in favor. You have three minutes, and please state your name for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. First of all, I would like to, is this on? I don't see what's on. Oh, thanks, Michelle. Thank you for serving, first of all. I know this is, having been in Mr. Rayleigh and other staff members' positions for a number of years, a number of years ago, I know this is a thankless job, and I appreciate it. So I hope you didn't start my time yet for that, Michelle. Anyway, I just want to give you a little bit of context. I've lived for 25 years in my house on Bret Hart and La Rue, which is around the corner from here, 39 years in the neighborhood. I was financially contributed to creating the historic district that your staff member talked about, was on your Code Committee, involved in the last master plan update where we got the historic designation for this area, and we met with a number of city department heads to talk about how could we work on enforcement, getting the sidewalk system extended, and other things. At that point, I met my neighbor Carrie. She lives about two blocks away, and she was very interested in doing what she could for the neighborhood, because she knows it's an asset to the city. We both have historic Reno Preservation Society tours come by our homes, Art Town Events in the neighborhood every year, and, as she mentioned, 3,000 trick-or-treaters. I talked to her neighbor, a couple houses down, and she said 4,000, so maybe she just bought more candy, I don't know. But anyway, some of the things Carrie was very interested in and mentioned to me a few years ago was maintaining the tree canopy, the character of the neighborhood, safety on Marsh Street, improving the sidewalk system, the kids that go to school at Reno High, some of those things. So I've known Carrie since then, and know she really cares about the neighborhood. So with that as context, what I'd like to do is explain to you why I am suggesting, why I'm in support of this, and why I recommend your approval. So you have, you have a copy of my handout, but, and this is, some of this is the same things that Jeff showed, but these are walls in the neighborhood that are over six feet. The one on the left side of this photo is almost directly across the street from Carrie's house. These are pictures of vegetative screening, which doesn't really have to come to the city, but the one in the bottom middle is right next door to Carrie's house, as you can see. The one on the right is across the street, and the one on the left is down about four or five houses from her. So people have created this vegetative screening without building walls, and it isolates, to me, it isolates their homes more than anything she's proposed. We also have very creative neighbors who have used other You have that, see if I can get that focused. You have the handout. The one in the top left is the wall on a wall, can use a retaining wall and then build a wall on top of that. I suppose they could do that at the Sutherlands because of the topography change, but they've chosen not to. The one in the bottom middle is, well, we have to get down to four feet at the corner, so we'll just put some vegetation in front. And then the one on the right is a wall set back from another wall. So as you can see, what they're proposing, I think, is a lot more compatible with some of the nicer walls in the neighborhood, which I've shown on this slide. And what they're proposing is very much like this. So I know my time's up. I think that what they're proposing is a benefit for the neighborhood, and it's compatible, and it's a lot better than some of the other things in there, and so I recommend you approve it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Michelle, any other requests to speak forms, voicemails?
I did not receive any more request to speak forms. We did receive correspondence that was forwarded to the Planning Commission. No voicemails, and I don't believe we have anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak for this item.
Anybody in the chambers wish to speak on this item at this moment? Seeing none, we will close public comment and open it up to the Commissioners for questions of the applicant or staff. Or move into discussion? Or emotion?
I'm happy to make some, a few comments.
Please.
So I thought that the work was, you know, the project you put together is very thoughtful, and while sometimes it is unfortunate that our neighbors kind of build walls from one another, I thought, you know, your efforts to maintain the integrity and the character of the property was well done, and I think, you know, you're, I believe you're anticipating putting some shrubbery and other flora and fauna in the area, so I think that's, that's going to look really nice. So I'm in support of this.
Thank you, Commissioner Villanueva, and I'll echo those sentiments. I mean, I live nearby, and I know a lot of these fences are different and everything, and what they've done is probably above and beyond what we would expect out of that neighborhood. So appreciate the applicant's well-thought-out process.
And I agree. I drive by your house frequently. I would say that that particular stretch of Marsh Avenue is experiencing like a lot of architectural change, and some of it is very contemporary, some of it is very historic, and I think that that's kind of what's interesting about our particular neighborhood. So I commend the attention of detail that you're putting into the project.
Great. Anybody want to make a motion?
Chair, I'm happy to make a motion.
There we go.
In the matter of case number LDC24-00018, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the major deviation subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all the findings.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rohmeyer with the second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. All right, we'll close item number 5.1, move to item 5.2, case number LDC 2400010, Our Lady of the Snows Parish Hall. Looks like we'll get a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, Commissioner members. My name is Greg Ernie. I am the project architect working for Our Lady of Snows on this project. With me tonight is John Krompradik, planner and land use and community planner, David Jockeman, our traffic consultant, and there are some other members of the parish here as well. And I believe we may have one or two people in support of this project. First of all, I would like to commend staff for the very thorough presentation and report they put together. I'll try not to be duplicative of that, but I do want to point out some, and highlight some of the things that we think are relevant to the request we're here tonight. We're here to, because the height of the building that we're proposing is 35 feet at the very center, and it's, the height is there because it's screening mechanical equipment on the roof. And the rest of the building essentially is within the planning parameters of the current zoning ordinances. Our Lady of the Snows Church is a well-established and very integrative part of the Plumas area plan and Plumas neighborhood. The church has been there since 1940, 83 years. The school has been there since 1950, 73 years. So as you can see, it's, it's been a well-established member and participant in the neighborhood. I'm not exactly sure how I operate this thing, but I can try.
You can use the mouse.
There we go. All right. I'm a little technically challenged at times. All right, this is the site. As you can see, the, right where the word site is, to the top of it is the existing parish church. To the bottom is the proposed location for the new parish hall. To the right is the Plumas Park, and to the left is, of Wright Street is a current existing parking lot and two residences that are owned by the parish that would be removed to make way for the work that's associated with this site. We'd like to point out, as far as the Plumas Park piece, Snows has been a very participatory member of the neighborhood in that they funded development of the upper tier of that parish park that they, or, excuse me, the community park that they use as part of the playground for, for the school. So Snows is, is somebody who wants to be a good neighbor, tries to be a good neighbor, and has been a participatory neighbor in the well-being of the neighborhood itself. This parish hall is the culmination of planning that's been going on for almost 20 years to get to this point. The parish hall needs were identified long ago. They have evolved over time, but this is the current iteration. The Wright Street abandonment was, happened a few years ago to make way for the ability to get rid of the parking, excuse me, the residences and allow the parking to occur. The other part that works is that the abandonment of Wright Street now allows a place for the school to have a drop-off place outside of the streets on both the north and south, Walker and Monroe. So that eastern double driveway there during drop-off and pickup hours be one-way north to south and come out the south end towards Monroe. On the site, as I mentioned earlier, is the church, the new parish hall, and the school on the right. Between the existing church and the parish hall is a plaza, and that plaza serves as a place and a gathering place for the new parish hall. It also provides the access point from the parking lot for the drop-off area to be able to access the school. It's a place where the children have a safe place to get in and out of their cars and go to school as opposed to dealing with the issues that sometimes happen on, on the streets on the north and south side. On the left side, there, next to the residence along Arlington Avenue, there will be a concrete masonry wall, similar to the one that's to the west of the existing parking lot that's there now. It will go in the back of all the residences and in the back of the duplex on the south side, providing that buffer between the parking lot and, and those residents. And it will be a six-foot tall to match what's there now. This is a view from Wright Street, pretty much in the middle, with the nice Reno manhole right in the middle. The duplex is on the left, and the new parish hall will be there on the right. Half of Wright Street is going to be, become part of the duplex property on the left, and what you see will be the outlet for the one-way coming towards Monroe Street during the, from the parking lot itself. The new parish hall is basically about where the trees are on the right. These are some elevations of the, of the proposed building. The upper elevations are the north at the plaza. The west elevation is in the middle, facing the parking lot, and then there's a comparative elevation of the existing church and the, and the new parish center. And the new parish center, just to talk about those elevations a little bit, it mimics the character of the existing parish offices, which are also a two-story building with a hip roof, much like this one. And the white columns that you see in the elevations hearken to the elevations of the columns on the north side of the existing church. And the exterior of the building is primarily brick, well-articulated brick with a lot of pattern that respects the patterns of both the church and the existing parish offices. The south elevation facing Monroe, the property slopes from the west to the east. The left side is approximately eight feet taller than the alley on the right, and then the lower elevation is, the elevation in the alley between the existing church, or, excuse me, the new parish center and the school. And again, block and brick are the primary elements there. The new center has a parish hall in it, and it also, parish hall serves both as a gathering place for the parish and also as an exercise gymnasium for the school. And what drives the height of the building is the height that is required for a gymnasium. Gymnasium needs to be 23 feet inside to effectively shoot basketballs. And not that my shot happens to need that much height, I'm pretty flat and not necessarily on target, but that's the parameter. And then with three feet of structure on top, that what, that is what drives the perimeter elevation of our building that we'll talk about here in a second. Other things on the ground floor are offices for the, for the parish, and then there's a chapel in the southwest corner that will be the daytime use, be a daytime use for daytime mass, or weekday mass as opposed to the weekends, so they don't have to worry about heating and cooling the full church for, for weekday masses. The second floor is offices, and there are some classrooms. There are dual-purpose classrooms. The school will use them, but they're also there for religious education purposes and other ministries within, within the, within the church itself. I mentioned a second ago the, the issues of the, the elevations on the building and the heights and things. What's driving the perimeter edge of the building, the perimeter wall, which you see is that 26 feet above finished floor, is the height of that gym, 23 feet plus three feet of structure. We can't put a flat roof on the building. That's part of the, part of the ordinance, and we need to screen the mechanical equipment, which will be on the roof. So the elevations have a sloped roof, the 5 and 12 pitch, that's asked, that exceeds the minimum required in the ordinance to bridge between the perimeter of the building and the mechanical screen parapet up on top. And then there are some existing little gables that pop out and the entrances that pop out on the north side to provide the delineation and the articulation that's required in, in the ordinances. And again, this is the west elevation. And the general theme, I'm not going to read this for, to you. The building completes the parish master plan, as I mentioned earlier. The two, it's a two-story building. The existing parish offices is this two-story building with a lower level. That's what the new building is, two stories plus a lower level. That also contains the classrooms and, and storage. The existing zoning allows the use of the, the new parish hall to exist within the existing zoning requirements. However, that's why we're here tonight, because it's required as part of the conditions. And the architectural design is consistent, respectful, respects the integrity and character of the existing buildings on the site, and, and it's a quality building with, with brick, and it is to be a, very much a contributing, I guess, asset to the neighborhood itself. These are the zoning that, that is part of what is the current Snows property, MF14 and And then here with, as I mentioned earlier, is myself, David, and John, members of the parish. We are here to take any questions, and we hope you'll concur with the, we fully concur with the staff report and the conditions, and hope you'll support the parish and recommend that it go forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now take a presentation from Jeff of the City of Reno.
Okay, Jeff Foster, again, associate planner for the record. Second case bringing you tonight is LDC 2410, Our Lady of the Snows Parish Hall. The project site is approximately 2.74 acres between Walker on the north, Monroe on the south, Lander and Plumas Park on the east, and Arlington on the west. Currently on the site, developed with a church, a school, two parking lots, the parish office, and two single-family residences, all of which would be demolished. The requests are a conditional use permit to allow for an expansion of the existing non-conforming uses, being the primary school and the religious assembly, as well as the major deviation to vary from the 25-foot maximum height in the Plumas neighborhood overlay to 35 feet, which is a 40% increase. The key issues are project design and code compliance, compatibility with surrounding land uses, and parking. Land uses surrounding the site are primarily single-family and multifamily residential uses to the north, west, and south, and then again, Plumas Park to the east. The zoning district is primarily MF14 with portions that are zoned MF30 and PF, and again, that Plumas neighborhood residential planning area overlay. The master plan is primarily mixed neighborhood with portions that are designated PQP, Public Quasi-Public, and multifamily neighborhood MF. And here are a handful of goals and policies that the project is in conformance with, and again, we can explore those later further if you would like. The background, the church was built in 1940 and the school in 1950. These are non-conforming uses as a conditional use permit is required for religious assembly uses in MF14 and MF30, and a minor conditional use permit is required for primary schools in MF14. There have been several previous entitlements that allowed the, the church to expand and the school to expand, as well as to abandon portions of Lander and Wright Streets. The proposed design is a 31,000, approximately 31,150 square foot, three-level parish center, denoted by the building with the star on it, and a courtyard south of the church. This building will meet setback requirements and incorporates additional setbacks and stepbacks for compatibility with and to reduce impacts on surrounding residentially-zoned properties, and that is per code. The parking lot would be expanding to 78 parking spaces by expanding the existing parking lot up in the upper-left corner to the south, where the two single-family homes would be demolished. I did also want to point out that the entrance on Walker is a full two-way access ingress and egress, allowing full vehicle turning movements. The existing intersection with Monroe would be a one-way, southbound only. The traffic impact study that was prepared for the project indicated no significant traffic impacts, and ongoing pedestrian and bicycle access will continue throughout the site as conditioned by condition number five under the abandonment for Wright Street. So ongoing pedestrian and vehicle, or sorry, ongoing pedestrian and bicycle access will be along the sidewalk through the site there. Continuing on with the proposed design, again, the applicant's representative talked about the parish center with offices, classrooms, a multipurpose parish hall, conference rooms, and other functional space. This design does comply already with articulation and transparency requirements per code, and it also complies with this two-story maximum in the Plumas neighborhood overlay. And the, the additional classroom space would allow the school enrollment to increase from approximately 380 to 450 students, so an additional 70 students. The major deviation for the height at the perimeter walls is 26 feet, as the applicant's representative indicated, with the interior height of 23 to 24 feet for the multipurpose room, allowing it to be utilized as a gym. So the, and the parapet wall effectively is set back 20 feet from the perimeter of the wall. That parapet wall will conceal mechanical equipment, which is also a code requirement. The Plumas neighborhood overlay does require a minimum roof pitch of four to 12. The applicant's representative indicated a 512 roof pitch is utilized, and that will, that effectively drives the overall height to 35 feet. Again, recognizing that the wall itself that you would see standing in front of the building is 26 feet, not 35. The 35 is interior on the top of the building. As far as compatibility with surrounding land uses, the 35-foot height is, is consistently, again, located approximately 20 feet back from the face of the exterior wall. Therefore, the perceived height immediately around the building would be 26. The 35-foot height would only be perceived at true elevation or at a significant distance away from the building, and shadowing also would not be a problem due to separation distances and orientation in relation to the sun. Continuing on with compatibility with surrounding land uses, again, this building is taller than the church, but you can see the church to the left is approximately 30 feet at the peak, which is also similar to the height of the Plumas Park Gymnasium. The scale of the proposed building is compatible with these and other buildings, including the existing school building, and there are multi-story, multifamily buildings across Monroe Street, which are, which are two stories there. Parking lot lighting and headlights are a potential impact on the surrounding residential land uses. The existing parking lot perimeter wall will be extended to the south and the east to block any headlights from affecting those residences. The, and in addition, condition number five is limiting the allowed height of light fixtures in the parking lot. Code allows up to 18 feet in this zone. We are requesting a condition, staff is requesting a condition, to limit that to no more than a minimum practicable height, practicable height needed to achieve standard parking lot lighting objectives. The applicant has proposed 13 feet, and that's what's in the condition of approval, no higher than 13 feet, which would, again, in addition to standard code requirements for cutoff optics and whatnot, would prevent light intrusion onto the neighboring residential uses. Condition number six is included to require an ongoing update of the agreement with the city for use of Plumas Park to offset the wear and tear from the increased usage that would come from the project. Regarding parking, there are a current, currently 120, 120 parking spaces, including shared spaces on Lander. With the proposed parking lot expansion on the western portion of the site, that would increase to 128. Based on the ITE rates, 95 spaces are required for weekdays and 100 Based on the ITE rates, ninety-five spaces are required for weekdays and a hundred-and-fourteen on weekends. So there is sufficient parking. Um, and if you go to code requirements, um, even if you don't count the shared spaces on Lander, um, the applicant still is providing more than sufficient parking based on what the city of Reno code requires. I also wanted to include condition number seven. Um, basically, condition number nine for the abandonment of Wright Street required at least seventeen spaces in the parking lot, you can see in the picture, to be usable by the public. Um, signage uh, needs to be updated per the condition to reflect that, such that uh, the public knows that they can utilize that parking space or utilize that parking lot. Here are the recommended findings for a conditional use permit and some similar recommended findings for the major deviation. Staff can make all recommended findings. And here's the recommended motion and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it. We'll now go to the commissioners for disclosure, Commissioner Veltar, so I don't forget you. Start it off, buddy.
Appreciate it. Uh, so I've uh, uh, received and reviewed emails. I spoke with the applicant's representative. I also routinely play basketball with the principal uh, of the, of the school, so I wanted to just say that for the record, but I don't believe that affects my impartiality or ability to consider this objectively.
Thank you. Commissioner Rormeyer.
Yes, I'm familiar with the site, um, and I reviewed the correspondence emails.
Commissioner Sarah, um, hang on, it's a lengthy one. Um, so fellow commissioners, I need to disclose, disclose the fact that I own property that is within the noticing area for this project. Uh, just to block over, to be precise, on this matter, I've sought guidance from the city attorney's office pursuant to NRS two-eight-one-eight, A dot four-two-zero, four A, the law presumes that the independence of judgment of a reasonable person in the public officer's situation would not be materially affected by the public officer's significant pecuniary interests where the resulting benefit or detriment occurring to the public officer's not greater than that accruing to any other member of any general business, profession, occupation or group that is affected by the matter. We're still going. Here, while I have a significant pecuniary interest in my real property, the resulting benefit or detriment occurring to me and my family will not be greater than the accruing to any other member of the general public that owns property in the project area. See in regards Weber Commissioner Opinion Number zero-nine-four-seven-C, two thousand nine. Mere ownership of property not sufficient to implicate disclosure requirements. The fact that I own property in the project area will not impact my ability to impartially review and render a decision upon this particular agenda item. In light of the foregoing, the independence of judgment of a reasonable person, my situation would not be materially affected by my pecuniary interest. And because this is not a clear case of disqualifying conflict of interest, I will be voting on this matter. Please accept this disclosure and lodge it on the record for this meeting and subsequent meetings pertaining to this agenda item. Period. Done.
Thank you.
Commissioner Armstrong, a much shorter disclosure. Uh, read and received emails and I'm familiar with the site. Thank you.
Commissioner Villanueva, unfamiliar with the site, read emails.
Commissioner Dragic, read and received emails, visited the site and spoke briefly with uh, one of the applicant's representatives. All right, I think it got everybody there. I think we're good. All right, we will now open it up to public comment. We do have some request-to-speak forms. First up is Elizabeth Brahman in speaking in opposition and after Elizabeth will be Jan Morrison. Elizabeth, if you can state your name for the record and you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you. I'm Elizabeth Brahman and I own the property directly across from the proposed building. I am not in opposition. I, I had, there was no other to check, so I want to share with you my concerns. I was very, very involved in two thousand and twelve with the abandonment of Wright, or Wright of Lander Street. I also have owned my property for thirty years this year and I live on Lander South near Urban. So my concerns were, when they built the building, the science building, it did not feel like it conformed to the beautiful brick. It looked like a very large industrial-style commercial building and I own the Rock House on the other side on the southwest corner as Snow's has on the northwest corner because they purchased the Rock House. My concern is I bought this property and I try to take the best care of it. Granted, my duplex is not the most attractive. I didn't build it, I wouldn't have built it that way. But the reality is, is that property is my income and I want to be able to feel like people don't feel like they've moved into an area that was not Midtown. And my concern with the building, the big building that we have that's being built is its proximity to the um, road and how the science building feels like it encroaches because of, of street, of setbacks. And I'm very, very concerned about the traffic because people park everywhere, cattywampus. I understand they're trying to mitigate that through the traffic pattern off of Wright Street, dropping the kids off, so people aren't going to be lined up on Monroe and Walker. But my biggest issue is, and I am more comfortable hearing about the mansard roof, the way it's being designed for the pitch, because I was looking at the height of the roof. And I just want to make a comment that I own other property in Midtown, Old Southwest, where people are building on the alleys informing me that the city's limit is thirty-five feet. So there is a common belief out there that thirty-five is not a deviation, just for public comment. So I am very concerned that we have enough setback that I'm not going to feel like there's a giant commercial building, because a church is a church, it's a business, it does many, many things, it does a lot of things for a community. Um, I'm hoping that we can look at this as approvals are made. As I said, I'm not in opposition, but I really would like to look at how it's going to affect someone like myself. And at the age I was when I bought it, I would have never thought this would have happened. And I had many family members that attended Snow's too. So I, like so many people in this room, have got intimate connections to Snow's. So um, I want to thank you very much for just listening to my concerns, put those into mind thought as we go forward with your approvals, your non-approvals, whichever direction you go with that, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, now up is Jan Morrison, speaking in favor, and after Jan will be Betty Dotson.
Hi, Jan Morrison, for the record. Um, first off, I want to go to staff report on page six. There's a small error in there. I attended the ward meeting and I spoke in favor of the project, but it doesn't indicate that. So, and I did bring a written letter to make sure that I'm part of the record tonight. So I live over on Arlington, my, I back up, my property backs up with the um, parking lot. And we're in favor of this, both the, the um, conditional use permit and the variance. They've been great neighbors. We moved into this neighborhood and my sister and I about three or four years ago, specifically be, because of OLS. And um, I happen to be, have, have a background in development and I love the diversity of the area. I love the single-family dwellings, I love the multifamily, I love the businesses mixed in there, all the public uses, uses. It's a very active neighborhood and um, it doesn't go to sleep at night and I really enjoy that. So we love the architectural style. We also appreciate that brick is going to be continued on the, the new um, addition. And I think within a couple of years, it'll look like it's been there since the nineteen-forties, the same as our house. So we appreciate that, that, that there's a continuity of architectural style. Um, I'm always out and about, I walk my dog and generally it's in the afternoon when school gets out. And I have to say that as, as obviously I've harried, been a harried mom taking kids to school, it's always orderly, it's packed, but it's always orderly. And um, the traffic hasn't really impacted us or even walking, everybody is polite. But the new traffic plan, I think, is really well thought out and I think it's excellent. So the expansion of that parking lot, I think, is really key and, and taking some of the, the um, traffic pattern um, more controlled and thrown one-way out, I think it's excellent. So um, just want to tell you that we think it's a great project, we're totally in favor of it and, and we appreciate all the work that went into it. And I would like to leave my letter, so it'd be in the record. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Uh, Ms. Dotson, I apologize, said you didn't want to make a statement.
I don't think I need.
Okay, do you want me to read the paragraph?
Hmm?
Do you want me to read what you wrote?
Oh, no.
Okay, okay. Thank you, buddy. All right, uh, next up is Mike Escobar, speaking in opposition.
All right, thank you, commissioners. And for the record, my name is Mike Escobar. I'm reading a statement I prepared um, about this topic. I live on the South Arlington Avenue, similar to the lady that just shared. Um, my property will, the, on, behind my property will be the proposed parking lot expansion. Um, so I feel very much personally affected by this project. Currently, I live about five hundred feet away from the Our Lady of Snow's property. I don't know what impact this or other public comment may have, but I want to go on the record saying that I oppose the expansion of the Our Lady of Snow's building and school. As houses get converted and traffic patterns get modified, to accommodate yet another outgrowth of this church property, there appear to be zero benefits to the resident of this Midtown community. As a private school and religious organization, it's unclear to me exactly what taxes or added value will granting additional rights over these properties give to the homeowners and residents who share the neighborhood with OLS. As things currently stand, residents are subject to a closed Lander Street and closed parts of Plumas Park throughout the year during every school day. More disruptive, however, is the large amount of traffic during school pickup and drop-off hours, when these small neighborhood streets get choked with dozens of SUVs, shuttling many children who do not even live in this area of town to and from a school that does not pay taxes like all other homes and businesses in this neighborhood. The space required to accommodate hundreds of students is not suitable for this residential area of town. Um, and as the gentleman from the city of Reno shared, that's only going to increase student enrollment potentially. Unlike public school students who often take the bus or walk from the nearby homes they live in, OLS kids are largely dropped off and picked up by individual vehicles, given how many live outside this community. Encouraging continued church and school operations and indeed further growth by adding larger church-owned buildings and more expansive parking lots will change the character and primary purpose of this mixed-use community for the worse. In the documents filed explaining how Our Lady of Snow's plans to change in the neighborhood, several residents expressed opposition to this building project and I add my voice to theirs. One homeowner, Mark Taxer, stated that after studying the maps and building plans, there did not seem to be adequate fencing or barriers between the newly-proposed parking lot and the adjacent properties. And I understand the gentleman earlier shared that there would be, um, I believe a six-foot concrete uh, fence. And then the gentleman from the city of Reno said that the lighting would be diminished in height from eighteen to thirteen feet. Obviously, I don't know, have a perfect mental map in my mind, but I'm still very much concerned that the light, noise, if there are any events that happen in that parking lot, that that's going to create a disturbance for homeowners nearby. I echo these concerns because my home's backyard would also share a border with a new OLS lot. Like Mr. Taxer, I'm worried there do not appear to be enough safeguards against noise and light pollution coming from this new lot. For my part, I do not feel like extending additional grace, space or patience to a private school that appears to have long outgrown this property. It's time for Our Lady of Snow's to stop asking the city of Reno and the residents of Midtown for more. It's time for Our Lady of Snow's to enjoy what they've gained over time and stop their land-grab attempts every few years. Otherwise, it might be time for them to find a larger property somewhere else that accommodates their parishioners and student body without imposing on others' needs to public space and lands. Thank you.
Thank you as well. All right, Michelle, that's all I have on the request-to-speak forms. Anybody else? Voicemails or anybody online?
Correspondence was received, that was forwarded to the planning commission. No voicemails, um, no more public comment forms and I don't, do we have anybody on Zoom that wishes to speak? If so, raise your hand. Nobody's raising their hand, so I think we're good.
Go ahead, go ahead, yeah. Anybody wishes to speak in the chambers, feel free to submit your request-to-speak form. Feel free to take the podium. Uh, just, hey, Michelle, did we lose Commissioner Veltar? Okay, still there, okay.
Still here.
All right. Sir, you all have three minutes and state your name for the record, please.
Does this work?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Mark Taxer, who was just talked about. Um, and I live, I'm going to see if this will work. That's my house on the corner. Anyway, um, my house was built in nineteen forty-eight, seventy-five years old, so right about the same time as the church. Um, I have a bad ear infection, so I'm, I, my volume and hearing is all off, so bear with me. Um, my concern is less about the noise and more about the light pollution. Um, a twelve or a six-foot wall and a thirteen-foot light, I can just see light spilling into my house all night long. Um, really, my main concern, the traffic. I guess we'll see what happens. Um, that's really all about, about all I had. Any questions?
All right. And then thank you for your time, appreciate it, sir. Anybody else in the chambers wish to speak on this item? Michelle, oh. John, would you like to speak?
I just wanted to introduce that uh, um, I-
State your name for the record, please.
John Krimpotic Kales Planning. I've been involved in this effort for twenty years. Uh, had Greg take the lead tonight because he's an architect, a very, he designed the building, did a fine job on it. I'd be glad to be involved in any of the Q and A and further dialogue because we've done twenty years of master planning that didn't really come out in the discussion tonight. And I think there might be some, if you want to engage in some narrative, I'm, I'm prepared. Thank you very much.
Great. Go fill out a request-to-speak form for me. Michelle, anybody else?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right, last chance. Anybody in the chambers wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and open it up to the commissioners for questions of the applicant or staff. Commissioner Rormeyer.
Yes, um, Jeff, I have a question for staff. So I understand the minor deviation was a request for the roof height. Was there any consideration of commending the Plumas Neighborhood Plan or looking for a variance for a, like a flatter roof that didn't meet the four-twelve pitch, which would have gotten closer to the height requirement?
Uh, Jeff Foster, associate planner for the record. Um, the major deviation, um, as you point out, was for the additional ten feet in height above the twenty-five-foot maximum in the Plumas Neighborhood Overplan, Neighborhood Plan. I do not, I'm not aware of any consideration that, uh, regarding a change to the Plumas Neighborhood Plan, um, specific to this project that was considered. Um, certainly nothing was brought to my attention.
Commissioner Sarah, please.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. You bet. Uh, Mr. Foster, one for you. It could be staff perhaps, or I'm sorry, the applicant. Uh, there was concern brought up about the uh, traffic, um, particularly maybe drop-offs. And you highlighted that there was a proposed kind of change or implementation of drop-offs uh, with the new parking lot. And uh, would you mind walking us through that and specifically highlighting if that proposed change helps mitigate the congestion concerns that were brought up?
Sure, absolutely. Um, can we bring up my presentation again, please? Okay, so, um, so the, it's always nicer to look at the landscaping plans or a whole lot prettier to look at, right? Um, so anyway, um, the, um, the intent and, and the applicant's representative did um, talk about this during his presentation as well. The intent is for traffic to flow in from the north, um, from Walker into the parking lot. Some folks will of course park their, their vehicles, others will just flow through the parking lot and down to the south, uh, dropping their children off uh, along the way, especially at the southern end where there's a dedicated essentially drop-off lane there, um, exiting the site, prior to exiting the site. As you can see though, they can also exit back onto Walker. Um, so you can see the two-way arrows there, so they, 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 uh, you know, people can park in there, um, flow to the south, drop off or uh, drop off and go, head back out to the north.
Can you demonstrate with a mouse? Do you have a mouse? Just the mouse is on the podium, yeah. Yeah, just the flow.
Yeah. Okay, so coming in, thank you very much, Commissioner Villanueva. Um, so coming in off of Walker here to the, from the north, coming in, flowing through the parking lot, dropping off, um, and especially dropping off here, uh, adjacent to the new proposed parish building here. Um, so that's the intent, uh, is to pull as much traffic, uh, drop-off traffic off of Walker here, uh, and Monroe by encouraging people to flow through here. Um, I'm not aware of a way to require that, um, but it's strongly suggested, strongly encouraged that the applicant, um, uh, you know, address that with their, their, their students, their parents, to drop off in that manner. Um, so, yeah. Does that answer your question?
Uh, yes, Mr. Foster, thank you.
You bet.
Commissioner Rormeyer.
Yeah, one more quick question from-
Yeah, one more quick question from a planning standpoint. There was mention that this has been a master planned project for close to 20 years. I just wondered if there had been consideration of something like a specific plan zone designation here. It seems like a number of entitlements and land use requests have to come through, and I wondered if, if there's going to be future iterations, or if there had been any mention if this is sort of the last phase.
Yeah, and my understanding that is that this is the last phase, as John Kropodak indicated. He is here and can answer that with a more full understanding, a fuller understanding of the quote-unquote campus master plan, but it's staff's understanding that this is the final piece of the puzzle, the culmination of, of the, of the master plan.
Thank you, Chair.
Yes, please, Commissioner Veltar, go ahead.
I have a clarifying question. The entitlement that they received, because they were in existence in 1950 prior to the requirement for a CUP, does that entitlement follow? Do they currently have that entitlement, or is it, with the redevelopment of this, is that entitlement out the window? Did they lose that?
No, so they're, basically, because the uses were established prior to, to the zoning regulations, they're assumed to have an entitlement, and that's per code.
Even, oh, yeah, that's right, even with the demolishment, or even though it's being demolished, that, they maintain that.
Yeah, they, they, they have an assumed conditional use permit for the uses. The, the previous expansion of the uses, i.e. the school building, required a conditional use permit, probably actually a special use permit at the time. So anytime that there is an additional use, because we have the code in place now, that requires the, the new entitlement, but the underlying entitlement for the uses themselves, they're non-conforming, but they will, it's just, it runs, runs with the land, so to speak.
Yeah. The, so we, we heard some comments regarding increase to patrons or schoolchildren. Do, is there any way we can cap that, or, I mean, I know there's going to be an additional 70 students, and it appears that a lot of the students are coming from outside of the neighborhood and driving in. Is that a condition that we can include, or is it kind of discussed with the applicant that, that would, because of the, you know, growth and, you know, the development expansion, it's assumed that we're also going to have that increase to?
So the, the proposed expansion from 380 to 450, that additional 70 students was, was the applicant's applica, that was their application. We, staff did not give consideration to a condition that would limit it to the 450, but that is what the application is based on, is the, the maximum enrollment of 450. So it's, it's implicit within the application.
No, I mean, what if we didn't give them, what if we had them maintain the current, which is, I'm trying to-
The 380?
The 380, yeah. So, I mean, I know 70 doesn't seem like a lot, but it's a small neighborhood. I used to live right on Humboldt, so it's pretty small and the streets are narrow, and then all, you know, during, you know, peak hours, there's a lot of cars, which is generally not necessarily a problem, but, I mean, 70 additional students, oh, here we go, we got-
So, and, and John, if you would like to speak, but just, the, again, the traffic impact study that was prepared for the project analyzed the additional trip generation from those 70 students, those 70 additional students, and, and there were no significant impacts as a result of the additional trips. And then when you factor that in, combined with the circulation flow through the site, pulling some of the, the existing vehicles that are currently using Walker as a drop-off and/or Monroe as a drop-off, when you factor all of that in, staff believes that this is actually an improved, improvement over the existing conditions, even with the additional, additional students.
Okay, and then, can I do one more?
Please, go ahead.
The light pollution, someone mentioned light pollution. Thoughts on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So the additional, the, the six-foot wall that would continue to the south and then head east, adjacent to Mr. Taxer's property, that six-foot solid wall would obviously block any headlight, direct lighting onto the adjacent neighbors from the, from the cars that would be parked up against it. As far as the-
Parking lot lighting?
The parking lot lights, yeah, that's the next one. So as far as the parking lot lights, again, code allows up to 18 feet, and the applicant proposed 13 feet. The condition was written in a way that encourages the, the, the lighting designer to look at, what is the max, the minimum practicable height to achieve parking lot lighting objectives, i.e. safety, right? I mean, that's the principal reason for the parking lot lighting. And so we want it capped at no, no higher than 13 feet, but we would encourage it to be even less, to, to the extent that those lighting objectives could be achieved. Having said that, code requires cutoff optics and the lighting to be directed and shielded such that it's lighting the site, not lighting off-site. So that, the, the light spillover should not be an issue onto the adjoining properties, even though the wall is six feet tall.
Okay, thank you. I have others, but I, I want to think about it first, because I need to have-
Sure, take your time. Commissioner Veltar, while you're on the digital side of things, do you have any questions?
Not right now, thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Basara, please.
Sure. Mine was related to lighting as well. Sounds like you spoke to it, but maybe I'd just throw out a suggestion, like, they have night, night lighting, like at Great Basin National Park. I'm not sure if that would tie into here, or if there's a recommendation for using a type of strategy or lighting that would make it so that the neighbors wouldn't be impacted by that, even at 13 feet.
Yeah, again, so code, code is very clear on lighting. Code requirements are very clear in terms of, of the shielding and the cutoff optics and the, and the angling of the lighting and whatnot. So a, as far as new parking lot lighting goes, staff believes that code will address that at the building permit phase. Having said that, again, the, the condition that requires the, the lighting height to be a maximum of 13 feet and less if possible, goes above and beyond what code would require if they came in for just a standard building permit. They would be allowed up to 18 feet, so that additional five feet, it would be a significant difference. And by, by lowering it to 13 and what code requirements already requires at the building permit phase, the, the lighting should not be an issue.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Just one more. There was mention about public parking, making it available for public parking. Were there going to be times for that, like, like at the neighborhood park?
No, so the abandonment of Lander, where, where that condition of approval came from, did not specify when the parking was allowed. It just was that there were to be a minimum of 17 parking spaces allowed in that parking lot. And so at some point in time, the signage was changed, that, that seemed to suggest that the public was not allowed to park there, and that's why the condition of approval is recommended to require the signage to be changed back to indicate that the public is allowed to park there. And there is no restriction on the times that, that it would be allowed.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Thank you. Commissioner Armstrong, please.
Thank you. I think this one's for staff, Jeff, but if you want to punt it to the applicant that works as well, so just going back to Villanueva's points about the students, more of a clarifying question. Is the max, so is 450 the maximum, a lot of students that they think they can serve within the confines of what they're building right now, like, period? Like, is that just the maximum that they'd be able to serve at any point in time, or could they elevate that? And if they can, what's the process look like if they do want to bring in more students and has greater traffic impacts? Like, what, what kind of tools are available to the commission at that point?
So, there is, there's not a, I, I'll punt it to the applicant's representative in terms of just the functional 450, where that came from and whatnot.
Yeah, that'd be great.
But as far as if they did want to increase enrollment, that, that's not really a, it's not really a planning issue per se, right? And so, you know, I wish I had a, you know, you could in theory condition it, I guess, but at this point, that staff's not recommending that condition.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
John, did you want to speak on that?
Commissioner Armstrong, thank you for the questions. Couple of comments on the school. There's a lot going on with regard to school capacity and the students versus, I think, the traffic part of it, but what I wanted to touch on was, in going from 380 to 450, that's the absolute capacity, based on maximum density in the classrooms of which were programmed in the PowerPoint of which the architect shared. In speaking with, to, to make it clear in my mind and to share it with you guys, the principal yesterday, this would be phased in over time, right? You have more students possibly coming upon opening of the parish hall, which includes a couple of the classrooms. He's also said they're targeting smaller classrooms. And so, you know, if you came in and had a new facility with three new classrooms and adding more kids, then they, then they shrink classroom size, which, of course, has some influence on the quality of education. So there's a lot going on there.
So the, the 450 is really a forecast? It's not like they have that enrollment spoken for?
It's, it's, it's absolutely, that's correct.
And then, yeah, so it's kind of like it trickles in over time and you-
It trickles in over time, right. That was the conversation we had yesterday.
Okay, no, that's actually super helpful, color. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'd like to touch on, I know the lighting was important to a couple of commissioners as well, and just so you know, I did meet with Mr. Taxer yesterday, staff, Jeff did a great job on explaining how aggressive our lighting code is, the cutoff, the photometric plan, which was part of the application requirements. In the case of this hyper-sensitive, I, I mean, Mr. Taxer brings up a good point. If you live in a duplex, we don't know exactly where that light standard is if you're sitting in a living room. And I told him, there will be a day in the future where we would be willing to meet and look at line of sight from somebody's living room and somehow adjust the standard that could be something you could see, right? Because 13 feet is higher than the, the initial floor in a living room. And I, that gets into really hypersensitive kind of lighting analysis, but we're willing to do that as part of it with the people on the west and Mr. Taxer's duplex on the south. I hope that answers your question.
Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Yeah, well, I have the applicant, so I'm looking at, and this is Google Maps, so I'm looking at Walker Street and Wright Street. There's a parking lot in that, I believe, is owned by Lady of the Snows, am I?
That is correct. All of that area is now.
Okay. And the, that's gonna, is that being, that parking lot's gonna stay as is, right? It's, there, there's no changes?
Actually, it's gonna be, it has to be integrated in this bigger parking lot plan.
Okay.
So we could go, if you wanted to go to my PowerPoint, I could, I could show you that. There's a little bit of transition because you're, you're taking what is one parking area that was acquired, you know, some 20 years ago, created a parking lot, and now you've, you're blending that into a, into a bigger master plan. So you see the parking lot there, how it functions, if you can visualize that on the north end?
Yeah.
And then, you know, the, the purple there is the street, the old street alignment. So that, say again? Okay.
We'll go back one.
So the purple is Wright Street, yeah.
Yeah, that was the old Wright Street right-of-way. So look at this area here is basically the parking lot that exists right here. You can see it's a slightly different configuration because of the acquisition of the two properties in the south and integrating it in to a bigger picture, you see? No property lines, kind of seamless, and then that drive aisle, that's the idea there.
And then the lights that I'm looking at right now in this Google image, they, I mean, they don't appear very high, so I'm not sure what the height of these ones are, but they, I mean, they don't look terrible, and it does appear to not be too invasive. Are those going to change, or is the lighting structure is going to be?
If, I think those are higher. If anything, they go down to that 13 cap of which we worked with staff on versus 18 is allowed by code.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Commissioner Veltar?
No questions right now, thank you.
Seeing no questions, we can move into discussion. Commissioner Basara, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up to fellow commissioners, perhaps staff, Jeff, you brought up a good, you answered my question with regards to the parking signs and the, the hours for parking. Is it clear, in my understanding, that there is no answer yet? There's just a understanding that a parking sign will go back up, but there are no set hours y- yet agreed upon?
That's, that's correct, yeah. The, the original condition did not limit what the hours that were available to be, to use the parking. It was just that there were to be 17 parking spaces. So essentially, 17 members of the public could utilize that parking lot whenever they want.
Is that something that you'd recommend for us to have kind of discussion and alignment on right now with the applicant, or is that something for the future?
You're certainly more than welcome to. It is a, it is a condition from a previous abandonment, so it's, it's already on the record.
Okay. John, would that be helpful for you guys to have that conversation now, or do you prefer to have it later?
What exactly, on the 17 spaces?
Just, just having the signage indicate the, the hours that those public spaces are available for parking.
Yeah, if you want to engage on more, yeah, I mean, I'm glad to, but Jeff's right. You know, when we did the abandonment, you got through access, right? That was part of the deal, so anybody can walk, drive, or mostly it's walking and biking, and then, and then the public parking for the 17 spaces.
Well, let's not make, let's not complicate things. I guess maybe I'll reframe my question. Has there, has it been a problem with, so far, or?
You know, I don't think there's a lot of demand, because it's basically, you know, kind of, if, if you, you come to the church or come to the school, that's why you would park there, right? And, and, but certainly the public's welcome, and it's going to be signed accordingly in the overall scheme of things in the future, the master plan.
Yeah, thanks. Fellow commissioners, do you feel a certain way, or do you want to hash this out, or are we good?
I felt good about it from the beginning. I appreciate you bringing it back up again, though, it's worth restating, so.
Thanks, thank you.
Any other further discussion? I guess I'll just chime in quickly. I appreciate what Our Lady of the Snows has done and presented tonight, and Jeff, very thorough report. You know, I read over this a multitude of times, and it, it just seems like it's very well thought out on all directions. Also, I do believe they bring a lot to the community. You know, I frequent the area for the parks and the basketball court, which I know they maintain and help with. And also, we're dealing with, you know, rising increase in demand for schools like this. And so this expansion probably does serve a need for the community and its infill, and, you know, locating this 10, 20 miles away south of Reno may or may not be serving the midtown area as best as I would like to see it. So I'm happy to see this, and be looking forward to supporting this project. If anyone wants to make a motion, we are ready to go. Please.
I, I concur with the chair's comments, and I am ready to make a motion if there's no further discussion. Okay. Case of LDC 24-00010, Our Lady of the Snows Parish Hall. Based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit and major deviations subject to the conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all the findings.
Great, we have a motion. Second. Commissioner Basara with the second. We have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, we'll go for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. All right, closing item 5.2, moving to item 5, oh, you know what, and I'm sorry, commissioners, we're kind of close to that eight o'clock time. Do we need a short break?
Sure.
All right, we will take a short five-minute recess where everybody gets some water and go to the bathroom. All right, we will take a short five minute recess for everybody to get some water and go to the bathroom. All right, folks, we'll rally everybody back a little bit. Mr. Veltel, you cool, brother?
Good to go.
All right. Thank you for coming back from the break. We will move on to item five point three. Case number LDC two four dash zero 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 two one, Over Ice Beverages LLC. We will take a presentation from the applicant.
Hi, my name is Curtis Beach. Um, I'm one of the owners in Over Ice Beverages. And we are here asking for a conditional use permit or application to be approved for a warehouse that we're in. It's not a huge warehouse, but it's a very small warehouse. And I'll give you some history. Myself and my brother and and a couple other guys started a business here in two thousand. And we ended up selling that business in two thousand and ten for a hundred and fifty-five million dollars. And it was successful, and we love Reno. And we want to continue businesses in Reno. I have three businesses right now in Reno. We, during COVID, got bored and decided to try to make a quality margarita based upon a margarita my brother was buying at a Mexican food restaurant at his home in Westlake Village. And um, we decided to do it in December of twenty twenty-two. And we decided to abandon a bottler that we were using in San Diego and use a bottler here in Sparks, Nevada. And because we wanted to put it back in the area we know. And so we decided in February to go out and get a warehouse. That warehouse was pretty much just gonna be a small distribution center for our product to to house bottles. We are less than, if I continue here. Well, I'll start with this. And we started this process in February of twenty twenty-three. So I've been going at this for almost a year, trying to get our business license in Reno, Nevada. And it's been extremely frustrating. I have had, I think I counted in excess of seventeen visits to the city hall here. Many of those to the planning board for the cup, help with putting the cup application into the system. It's not an easy system to use, and I think you guys know that and probably have heard that. Through the business license division, I've been to the Nevada State Tax Board six times. I've been to Washoe County three times. I've been to the Reno Police Department once. I've it it's, and I'm still here. So it's been frustrating. And I'm sorry, but Carter has taken the brunt of a lot of that. And I appreciate Commissioner Mike Raely for talking with me at Tuesday about it. We are in a little tiny building, suite in Riggins Court, which is over near the mall. We have thirty-two hundred square feet. I am less than a hundred yards away from the new Airport Commerce Center, which is eight hundred ninety thousand square feet. It is a huge distribution warehouse center. I am a hundred and fifty yards from ITS Logistics. I have within five hundred yards of me, three other distribution centers. But yet we're being asked to go through this cup process because we're in, I guess, a mixed use zone. So we're here doing that. We're going through the pain of it. That's kind of an overhead view of what's happening there, where we are. There's warehouses everywhere. This is our little facility. It's about twenty-nine hundred square feet of warehouse and about three hundred square feet of office. These are the pallets that we get. These come in from China. They're in container loads. They ship from San Pedro, California. When those trucks come in, I get two hours to unload them. That's it. That's all the trucking company allows me. And if I don't do that, I pay a fine, a fee for leaving the truck driver there longer than that. So we're pretty much, we get it unloaded and we get it out very quickly. The equipment we use is an electric forklift because I can't have exhaust residue on our bottles. I use, which an electric forklift is very quiet. I have a manual pallet jack and I have a hand dolly. That's my equipment. That's it. So I feel there's no safety exposure there to anybody in the surrounding area. These are our current sales. This is outdated. But, you know, we're not doing a ton of business. We're a brand new startup. We launched this in June one of this year. And it's been hard to get it going. Nevada has some difficult liquor laws that we've got to live by. I hate to say that it's been easier in California, but we are mostly in Southern California right now, moving to Northern California and moving to Nevada. We have about thirty stores in Las Vegas, and we have about seven stores here in Reno right now. We average, I would guess, about two trucks a month or will average two trucks a month. The last truck I had at our building was August second. So we're not doing a ton of distribution business out of our warehouse. It's just not happening. Our business hours are eight to five, and that's, I have a phone number on the door for people to call me if they need me because I don't go to the office every day. I have other things I'm doing. We have our bottler, our co-packer is in Sparks. It's Damon Industries. They're a boutique bottler. And they are currently providing our distribution for us out of their warehouse because we can't do it out of ours. And then I have a warehouse in Southern California that we are maintaining and have maintained for a year because I can't move it here. And there's been a significant cost expense in that. I'm not the only guy getting trucks into our facility. These are, we have um, Blind Onion Pizza, we have Wild Garlic Pizza. These guys get their food products in every week, pallet loads of it. So, and they don't have a conditional use permit. We are growing, and that is for real. And so there will be a day, I probably have already outgrown this building. We are in talks right now with another warehouse in Sparks. And that may happen, that may not. So I'm continuing this process just in case something happens with that and it falls through. We are growing leaps and bounds. We just signed a national rollout deal with Whole Foods. And that's gonna be five hundred and five stores. And that process is gonna start. It started this week. We delivered to our first store this week. So it it's huge. And it will grow. We submitted our product to the World Spirits Competition in San Francisco, and we won two double golds, a silver, and two bronze, which we were pretty proud of. And we're pretty proud that that's coming from Northern Nevada. So that was pretty cool. And we hadn't even launched yet. We were up for what's called RTD, or Ready to Drink Cocktail of the Year, but we're told we'll never get it because they don't do that to companies that haven't launched. And we didn't get it. But we're pretty proud of where we are, and we'll resubmit it when we do. And I hope that we can represent Northern Nevada that way. These are the bottles. They're good looking bottles. And we're introducing them to the local area here. I'm doing tastings at Total Wine. We are doing tastings everywhere we can do them, mostly in Southern California. We do have a liquor license in Southern California. So that's where we're at, and I hope you'll consider us. And I think um, I think it's a great product, and I think it's great to represent Northern Nevada.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we now get a presentation from staff. Carter, thank you.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. Carter Williams, Assistant Planner for the Record. For you tonight is a conditional use permit for a warehouse and distribution use. The property is located on the southwest corner of Tyrone Road and Riggins Court. You can see Meadowwood Mall there to the west, and it's not shown here, but the airport is to the northeast. The project is located within a, about a thirty-two hundred square foot tenant space in a larger two acre site. The property is located within the mixed use urban zoning district, which requires a conditional use permit for warehouse and distribution. The property has the master plan designation of mixed employment and is consistent with policies related to community development, the overall mix of uses in this, the area, reduced truck traffic for a warehouse and distribution use, and uses that are compatible with airport facilities. So the, on the screen is a image of the proposed location. That is the actual suite entrance. It is an existing industrial facility. And the previous use in that suite appears to have been a gym, which is the reason why we're here today. If it were a warehouse, we would have been able to continue that use. But because it transitioned into something that is allowed by right within the mixed use urban zone. If it were a warehouse, we would have been able to continue that use, but because it transitioned into something that um is allowed by right within the mixed use urban zone. We have to restarts the whole the process for for warehouse and distribution center. Even at the scale. Um, the staff report or the staff's focus, my focus was on um compatibility with surrounding uses. Um, generally, uh, the area is characterized by mostly light industrial, commercial and warehouse uses. Um, there is, although there is an area with two single family residences and residences in the vicinity. Um, there is adequate screening. From uh of of the facility that is existing today. Um, and generally the uh operations of the use are extremely limited. Regardless, staff has recommended a condition that does uh limit onsite movement, unloading and loading of trucks to suitable hours. Um, well above actually above their um hours of operation proposed. Um, there also is a, I didn't mark it on the the screen, but there is a multifamily project um to the west, but it is um. It there's a significant buffer with another warehouse building that's existing today. Um, on the screen, oh, well, those are the conditional use permit findings. Um, it says master plan amendment, but uh those are the conditional use permit findings through staff's review and analysis. We were able to meet all the findings. And I'm concerned about the next one. That is the wrong motion. So um. The motion is in the staff report. Um, staff recommends approval of the um application.
Thank you, Carter. Appreciate it. All right, we will now go to the Commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Veltow.
Uh, Commissioner Veltow, familiar with the site? I think that's it.
Okay, Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Becerra, same disclosure.
Commissioner Boromir, familiar with your site?
Commissioner Dracula, same disclosures. Okay. All right, now we will open it to public comment. I have no request to speak forms.
I did not receive any correspondence, no voicemails and no one on Zoom.
Great. Anybody in the chambers wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and open it up to the Commissioners for questions of staff or the applicant. Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Question for staff. Carter, do you have, uh, do you uh? Excuse me, I should have thought of the question first. Do you uh have any concerns or do you see any concerns with the use of truck or um? It appears he uses a truck to transport. Do you foresee any issues there?
There's already existing facilities within the the actually within those buildings that utilize trucks. So there wouldn't be any additional impact in in our opinion. And the residential. Impacts of the residential are limited because there's there's already that very significant two acre barrier between the existing multifamily. The single family residential uses are also within actually a flight path. So it's not encouraged that those that these use uses continue for safety considerations. Um, so. This area also is expected to transition to mixed employment. That's that was the master plan. Um, so there will likely be a zone change in the future that really. Prioritizes light industrial or even more like well warehouse and distribution particularly in this area. So I think it's planned to be um for that those types of uses, um but with the current operation, I don't expect any impacts.
Okay, thank you.
Michelle Becerra, please.
Sure. Thanks, Chair. Uh, Carter, just a clarifying question. Um, the applicant mentioned that he's been at this since February. Is that correct? Uh, so kudos for hanging in there. Um, what exactly was the reason for the delay? Like what's caused it?
I have not, I was not involved with the business license review process, so I'm not entirely sure what what the issues were with the with that particularly, but. When once it was submitted, we have a timeline that we moved pretty quickly. In fact, I actually bumped this meeting up. This was supposed to be on the next meeting in December. So we did, we did attempt to move it faster. Once we did get it received.
Okay, great. Thanks, Carter. Um, just trying to get insights into what we can do better as a as a side note for this. Um. And maybe for the applicant. Uh, a question for you, if you don't mind stepping up. If that's okay, Chair.
Yes.
Go ahead. You 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 mentioned that you anticipate growth and which is great. And again, thanks for sticking in there.
Yep.
What do you anticipate your uptick to be and will the current facility be enough to support that growth?
No. Okay. No, it won't. We 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 are in currently in search of a new facility. Because of that. We 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 think probably by the end of second quarter. Beginning of third quarter, we will have to have a larger facility.
Q two, Q three of twenty twenty-four?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so this is kind of a springboard for you.
Yep.
Okay.
We we had trucks on the, we had. I shouldn't say trucks. We had containers on the water.
Okay.
And I had to find places to put. You know, thirty pallets of bottles.
Got it.
So that's, so we took this. This was the first place that met all of our requirements.
Okay.
In the. Real world, I need a dock high door. I don't have a dock high door at this facility.
But thi- thi- this would help you uh achieve some of those goals in twenty twenty-four?
Yes.
Okay.
Currently, it it meets our requirement.
Okay.
But in that with that growth, it's not gonna. In several months.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Veltow?
No questions?
Okay. Seeing no other questions, we can move into discussion or a motion.
I can make a motion.
Please do.
Based upon, uh, for actually first, I do want to say congratulations on your success. And good luck with your project as you move forward. Based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit. Subject to conditions listed in the staff report.
Way of emotion.
Commissioner Armstrong, I'll second.
Our way of emotion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Good luck. All right, closing item five point three, moving to five point four, LD, case number LDC two four dash zero 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 two zero. Mill and Greg Street Master Plan and Zoning Map Amendment. Looks like we'll get a presentation from the applicant.
Uh, Marty Harson, architect, um, originate architecture. For this particular. Um, I I'm representing one of the property owners. Who recently purchased the uh two parcels, the um. Six, there'd be nineteen and thirty-six. Um, can I scroll forward? Go to the. Oops, this this one? Oops, back up. There we go. Um, so our. Parcels that we're talking about in this particular uh zone change and master plan amendment are. Located uh on the south side of the manmade water. I guess you'd call it water retention uh for the grants here. Resort, uh, those, uh, there are five, excuse me, four buildings there. Um, those four buildings were all built in between nineteen sixty-nine and nineteen seventy and they were all industrial at the time. Um, clearly we've grown since then. Um, right now there uh this zoning is uh mixed use urban. Um, and with my clients purchasing the corner parcel and the parking lot. And working with the property owner to the east um to give the most flexibility. Uh, we had talked initially to staff planning with Carter about uh possibly changing back to industrial, but uh that didn't really quite fit into the master plan. Um, pieces, but uh general commercial seemed to fit that bill. It also would allow my client to uh submit for a conditional use permit for a future project. Um, and it also uh for the property owner to the east allows them uh their. Uh, more flexibility in terms of leasing out their their buildings. Um, these are not exactly small buildings, fifty-two thousand square feet. Twenty-six thousand square feet. Uh, my client's building is fifty-two thousand square foot footprint with two stories, so. Kind of large. So uh. The uh. Presentation tonight is uh just for master plan amendment. Uh, going from urban mixed use to suburban mixed use uh per Carter's direction. Um, and then changing the existing uh land zoning from mixed use for those parcels to uh general commercial. Which does fit more in terms of the front edge right off of Mill. Um, and we are fully aware of, there's an RTC plan to widen Mill Street at some point, so. They're gonna take a little bit of land. I think that's. That's it. We had our neighborhood advisory meeting on November seventh. Uh, neighborhood meeting uh last night at the at the project site. Um, or my client's building. Um. And that's it. If anybody's got any questions.
Thank you. We'll get a presentation from staff and we'll come back.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, presentation from staff. Carter?
Right. Well, again, Carter Williams, Assistant Planner for the Record. So this is a master plan and zoning map amendment set um for five parcels totaling six point eight eight acres located on the northwest corner of Greg Street and Mill Street. Um, to the north is the uh GSR um resort. The specific request is for a master plan amendment from urban mixed use to suburban mixed use and a zoning map amendment uh from mixed use urban to general commercial. Starting with the master plan, so the. General um. Kind of like. This this proper, the Mill Street is an urban corridor. So urban mixed use generally is suitable along or is identified for these areas. Um, but because of this proximity or adjacency to mixed employment. Um, staff thinks that it's an appropriate transition to start grading down and start matching um. Density and intensity requirements across the street. So suburban mixed use has a slightly less in um intense capacity from a zoning perspective. Um, which. Contextually within the area provides that transition down. Um, generally, master plan policies uh that support this are um urban revitalization. Um, the the mutual um greater utilization of properties, providing for more geographic diversity and um providing consistency and heightened massing um along urban corridors. From a zoning perspective, currently it's zone mixed use um to transition to general commercial. General commercial is a conforming district within this um suburban mixed use master plan land use designation. Um, you can see that there's this stark difference between the mixed use to the the north and this industrial mixed employment to to the south. So it's a little jarring. Um, from a zoning perspective currently. By proposing this general commercial, it allows again for that transition. On the other side of Mill Street, we have a zoning that prioritizes industrial development. By assigning GC to these properties, we still provide for the opportunity for a mix of uses typical of urban corridors. But als- but also reduces standards um to be similar in form to that of surrounding uses. Um, some a summary of some of the changes proposed uh with this transition from NU to GC, certain commercial uses will become available. Um, industrial uses generally um will become prohibited and that's really from staff's perspective, it's important because we are able to prioritize. Um, commercial use, commercial and residential uses in this area to still provide that that balance of uses. Um, between the that industrial prioritized section to the south and then the uh. The commercial to the north. Generally, though, um retail, restaurant, multifamily residential um will remain allowed with with this transition. From a development standard perspective, um there's not too many changes from a setback perspective, but there are changes proposed. Um, a reduction for that matter for the max maximum height, maximum stories and maximum density. Currently in mixed use, there's no limit. Um, and general commercial does limit um. Height to sixty-five feet, stories to five stories and a maximum density to forty-five dwelling units per acre. This is more consistent with the um industrial zoning um development standards across the street. I believe industrial commercial is fifty-five. Um, with the similar max maximum stories and residential is not allowed in industrial. So this still provides that ability for residential to be established here if the property were to be redeveloped. Um. Uh, and just a note, there are no architectural changes. So mixed use to general commercial also retains the same level of architectural detail that would be required under mixed use. Um, so window transparency, um features that draw pride provide interest to the the buildings will be retained if the property were to be redeveloped. On the screen now are the findings for a master plan amendment. Through staff's review analysis, we're able to meet all the findings um for a master plan. As well as for um a zoning map amendment. And the recommended motion is on the screen. I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Carter. Appreciate it. We'll now go to the Commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Veltow.
Uh, Commissioner Veltow, I'm familiar with the site and I spoke with the applicants, or I'm sorry, I spoke with people in opposition to the project.
All right, Commissioner Boromir.
I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Becerra, unfamiliar with the site?
Commissioner Armstrong, I'm familiar with the site and I spoke with folks that were also in opposition with the project.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Dracula, familiar with the site and also spoke with uh people in opposition to the project. Um, all right, we will now open it up to public comment. I have no request to speak forms. Anything over there, Michelle?
No correspondence was received, no voicemails. I don't have anybody on Zoom.
Looks like we have someone in the chambers.
If you could please fill out a comment card as soon as you're done.
And state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Mr. Chairman, uh, members of the planning commission, my name is Andrew Dis, Senior Vice President of Morello Gaming. We own and operate. The Grand Sierra Resort. I wasn't planning on talking tonight. I was coming here to listen to the presentation because we didn't know. What was planned to go in the site. Uh, we haven't had any outreach from the applicants. Um, we have a large presence right next door. And uh listening to staff's presentation, you know, this is the first time that we're seeing. That there's going to be uh proposed firearms business. Uh, we have a non-restricted gaming license. We host several large entertainment events right next door to the parcels in question and. If you've seen the recent news, we have proposed to do the largest private capital investment in the history of the city in Reno on our property, which will include. Uh, new arena, which will host collegiate events like Nevada Wims Men's Basketball. Uh, concerts, uh, you name it, as long as we can fit it in the arena, we will have it there. Um, so we we feel like it's it's a little inappropriate at this time for the commission to take this up. Seeing as how there there hasn't been any communication from the applicants with the neighboring properties about uses going in there. Uh, we're extremely uncomfortable with any firearms business uh next door just based off the events that we have and. Um. You 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 take into consideration what we saw happen at UNLV yesterday. Um, Commissioner Villanueva, I know uh that's your alma mater and we're going to be hosting collegiate events right next door to the property. And God forbid, we see something similar happen uh here in Reno. Um, but the fact is, we are gaming and the, you know, largest incident of a kind. Uh, largest mass shooting in our country's history happened from a gaming property into uh. Large event, uh, the Route Ninety-One Music Festival in Las Vegas. So. Uh, given all of those concerns, I haven't heard of um any protocols that would be put in place. If patrons are going to be entering into uh the shooting range to make sure that they haven't been uh using alcohol. Um. Guns and booze don't mix. Um, so, you know, we we have concerns. Uh, we'd like to learn more about the project. I just had a discussion prior to this with one of the applicants for the very first time. Um, but really, like I said, uh, we came here to learn about the project tonight, but we just feel like. It is too soon for any approvals to go forward on this. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. If you don't mind filling out a request to speak for him, that'd be great. Appreciate it very much. Michelle, anybody else on Zoom?
No, no.
Okay. Looks like we have someone in the chambers. Yeah, if you can. Feel free to come, state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes and then fill out a request to speak for him when you're done, please, sir.
Sure. Hi, my name's Ken Crawford. Um. I represent the owner of the property uh and part of the development team.
Get a little closer to the mic if you don't.
Sorry, yeah, sorry. Got a bit of a scratchy voice too. Uh, good to see you, sir. Um, I just wanted to let council know too that we we have reached out to the Grand Sierra. We have a really great rapport with them. Uh, myself and some other people have actually uh personally trained their security team. Uh, so we're aware of their gaming commission uh like status. The. All the protocols that uh the gentleman's worried about, I'm more than happy to discuss with him or you guys as we get. Towards the conditional use permit side of things. Uh, it was to our understanding uh with Carter that we're just stepping through the process. This is my fourth facility that I'll have designed and gone through. Uh, we just stepped through the process with the outdoor facility and stagecoach. Uh, so we understand that there is a lot of concerns. Uh, I had two personal friends at the concert in Las Vegas, so I understand those concerns as well. Um. So any questions you guys have about any of that kind of stuff, I'm more than happy to answer. Um, but we didn't bring any renderings or policies or procedures because it was just the master plan and the zoning. Changed, but I did want to, after the gentleman stepped up, uh. Come up here and see if anyone has any questions or whatever.
Thank you. We'll be asking your representative and if needed, he can call you up.
Okay, awesome. Well, thank you. Appreciate you.
All right, if you can fill out the request to speak forum, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Anybody else in the chambers? Please, come on up, sort of state your name. You'll have three minutes and please fill out a request to speak forum when you're done.
Jerome Hawkins. I am the Director of Training and NFA Compliance for the property in question. Historically, I am a retired Reno police officer as well as United States Army veteran. Many years back, the Director of Security for Grand Sierra, Mohammed Rafiquat, who was a lieutenant with our department, reached out to me because I had taught at the academy level and throughout northern Nevada as a instructor in both hand-to-hand through firearms and officer survival to create the program that they currently have for SRT. That was done with Reno Guns and Range where I was the training manager. Excuse me, I'm getting over, I was sick last week, so my voice is a little scratchy. When the pandemic hit, all of that got shut down. After the pandemic cleared, we reestablished that program and put their security team through two days of intense training qualification. After the program was established, it was challenged by Nevada Gaming and they were actually directed to terminate their employees. The director at the time contacted me. I reached out to the investigator up here north and then was directed to the investigator in southern Nevada, wrote them a very lengthy description of the training that were provided. And they turned around and reestablished their SRT team immediately. And I was told that the training that we had established was actually a model for what they wanted to see at other facilities. We, I personally very much understand the concerns of firearms and the misappropriation or misuse of such. And that's why, just this week, I reached back out to their Director of Security and their supervisor for SRT. We want to be good neighbors. I want to meet with these people. I want to reestablish the training that we had in the past. I want them and their armed professionals to be what other casinos and establishments look at for what they should have. We understand there are bad people in the world and things do happen, but when we respond appropriately and within the level of force necessary to resolve these things, we do so with minimized risk to our public. I am part of this community. I have served this community for over 30 years and wish to continue to do so. And I'm just going to apologize if we didn't reach out to you sooner, and we will make up for that. If you have any questions of me or my background or anything like that, I'll be happy to answer for you.
Thank you. If you don't mind filling out a request to speak forum. Thank you. Anybody else in the chambers wish to speak on this item? Michelle, anything else on your end? All right. We'll close public comment and move to the Commissioners for questions of the applicant or staff.
Chair, I have some questions.
Please do, Commissioner Veltow.
Thank you. My first questions, I want to ask a few questions of the applicant.
Sure. Marty Harrison, Architect.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for joining us.
You bet.
I, it's not common that I hear from people in opposition and from the applicant conflicting stories over whether there's been communication. Who exactly did you all speak with at the GSR?
I'd have to defer to my client.
Please do.
So when we initially did the training, I had actually had all their executive staff come down and witness part of the training we did because they had similar concerns. We then had about an hour, hour and a half debrief with them. They had given me all their business cards. When we realized we were getting this building, I tried reaching out to those people, unfortunately discovered that they were no longer part of that. So I did reach out to the security director and had a meeting with him on Tuesday, that would be Pierce Toomey, and with Jake, and I apologize, I don't know Jake's last name, who is now the supervisor for SRT, to try and re-initiate what we had done in the past. We had a very good working relationship with them when we managed Reno Guns and Range. Since leaving there and expanding what we're doing now, I wanted to reestablish that.
So I just wanted some clarity on that. So is it true that the, you said you had a training where you gave some business cards to some executives. When was that training?
So when Mohammed reached out to me, they wanted to establish an armed professional security response team. And what he wanted from me was protocols that would not only meet the state requirement for armed professionals, but exceed that. And there's different things that have to be in that. They need to have understanding of laws, arrest and control procedures. They need to have firearms training. They needed to have a objective qualification. But we wanted to go beyond that and also have a subjective performance evaluation. So we did one full day of live fire training on the range. We did half a day on arrest to control laws for use of force, firearms retention, and then we did half a day of reality-based training. In the reality-based training, we actually conducted that on property at GSR. It involved several scenarios to ensure that their personnel that they were hiring were in fact using judgment that was congruent with their policies and state law. It did result in the termination of one of their employees because at the end of that training, it was determined that the way that person acted in those scenarios was not congruent with either their policy or law.
Sir, I, I'm sorry. I'm just trying to understand the, when did that occur?
That originally would have been, I believe it's 2017 through 2018, if you remember, Ken. Exactly. Yeah, I believe it was, several, it's been several years back.
And at that time, were you considering this application?
No, sir. We were managing Reno Guns and Range at the time. And in '21, after a failed attempt to purchase that, we ventured off on the path that we are now on. And then we discovered the property that we're currently in and are trying to reestablish, you know, the relationship we had before.
So from that time in 2017 until this Tuesday, when you spoke to, you reached out to the Director of Security, did you have any communication with the GSR?
We had been working with them, doing their qualifications and their training until I left in July of 2021 from Reno Guns Range. My staff stayed and continued that training with them at RGR. And then my understanding is that they then left the RGR facility for their training, went to another range off property, and that was the reason that I reached back out to them. So.
Let me ask that question a little differently. From the time you had the training in 2017 until Tuesday of this week, did you have any communication with the GSR about the application the commission is currently considering?
No, we had no idea we were even going to be doing this until after 2021, 2022.
Okay. Thank you. I have some questions for, for staff, if that's okay, unless anyone else has questions on this topic.
You can keep going. No problem. Oh.
Thank you.
Okay.
Alex, I'm here, Carter. Carter Williams with the record.
Hi, Carter. How you doing? I have a couple of questions for you. I'm trying to understand first, the conforming, the finding that this is conforming. The entire area that is surrounding this parcel is urban mixed use. I'm trying to understand why it makes sense to transition down with, on, within the same block before you get to the lots of land that are across the street. Is that consistent with how we typically consider transitioning down? In my experience, we typically transition down kind of adjacent, across the street and transition that way. It seems abnormal to me that we would transition down on the same block of land.
So generally, we, it's good planning practice to not have a dividing line, which we actually do in this case, unfortunately, a dividing line along the street. Because when you have two separate zones that have two separate standards that, that are kind of incongruent, out of scale, and this one, in this case it is, mixed use has no limit on height, no limit on, on density. On the other side, there's a, there's a limit to 55 feet. So it would be good planning practice from our perspective to maintain, like, similar design standards on both sides of the street. So that would, from a conformance standpoint, especially from, from standards, we would, we would consider this conforming.
Okay, I appreciate that. I want to talk about the uses. So when I was looking through the allowed uses that are permitted under the existing zoning versus the proposed zoning, under the proposed zoning, some things that are prohibited are, for instance, hotels with non-restricted gaming, hotel condominiums, and cannabis dispensaries. Given that our, you know, guiding principles encourage, you know, vibrant neighborhoods, economic development and tourism, wouldn't it make sense to keep those uses allowed when this area is directly adjacent to a resort and casino?
I think that from the, so, specific to the hotel gaming use, I mean, I don't, I haven't totally considered that, but I think that the, the context, so from staff's perspective, one is this, this is what they're requesting, GC. I do find that the uses for mixed use urban specifically, we could just get more industrial. In fact, there's an industrial building currently there. So by narrowing it down to a more commercial-centric area, it, I think it better targets that area for a mix of uses. So although, I mean, hotel commercial, that, and commercial condominium, or, sorry, hotel condominium wouldn't be allowed, I don't see that as necessarily being a hit against this application. I think that, that from staff's perspective, it's still supportive based, based on all the other uses that would be allowed. I would also say that they, on the narrowness of the site, these, the site, I don't think would be, could be developed as a hotel casino easily. But generally, I think we're focusing more on the broader picture of what other uses are allowed here. What's our, what's our target for this area, especially being at the, the end of a corridor. And to go back to your transition conversation, because this is at the end of an urban corridor leading into a more of an industrial area, those, like, the, the transition down from uses also kind of makes sense because it's, it's, services start to fall off as we go further out into those areas.
Okay, I appreciate that. I also want to hit on what is permitted under the proposed zoning. One of the things that was flagged in public comment was the potential for a gun range. Another potential use that is permitted under the proposed zoning is chemical processing. How is staff, how have you evaluated the, the potential for those uses, given the proximity to casino and resort?
And forgive me, I might have to look up the code, but I think chemical processing requires a conditional use permit as well as hazardous materials. So there's still an extra step. In fact, hazardous materials, if that, are hazardous, a waste facility, I think is what it's listed in, as in the code. Those two uses, or, no, the hazardous waste facility also has to go to the city council, and there's a major public engagement process that goes, goes along with it. So although it's allowed by right, or not, I'm sorry, allowed with a additional process, I mean, staff finds that the procedures established by state law don't necessarily, don't provide a space where we would not support this application.
Thank you. I really, I really appreciate your feedback, Carter.
All right, we'll kick it to the Commissioners in the chambers. Commissioner Armstrong, you actually, you can.
Actually, Commissioner Veltow touched on most of the questions that I had, so I'll just reserve my comments for our comment period.
Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Thank you, Chair. I have a couple of questions for Carter, their master plan use questions. So which area, what sphere of influence is this in, in the master plan?
So it's in the city of Reno's sphere of influence?
Okay, so, well, in the sphere of influence, I see that there's like the urban corridor, there is the downtown district, there is the, so on and so forth.
So, so this, yeah, it's not sphere. So there's different elements to the structure plan in the master plan? Is that what you're referencing, or?
Let's see. How would you reference? Because I'm looking, so I'm looking at the.
So the urban corridor is a, is a part of the structure plan. And this is within the mixed use area of the structure plan, which doesn't have a lot of policies to it, but general commercial is a mixed use zone.
Okay, so, okay, so, and you can help me understand this a little bit better since you're, you know this like the back of your hand. So, okay, so if I'm looking at the sphere of influence, and there is a regional center, you know, neighborhood center, corridor, employment area, neighborhood, and then it goes down, regional has the downtown and the convention center and so on and so forth. So none of this, we don't even have to consider any of this, these components?
Yeah, this isn't located in a, oh, it may actually be located in a regional center, actually. But I think that what you're referencing is the structure plan. And the, and those, those are driving our policy considerations, too, with particularly the urban corridor. That's the big, the big one.
Right, that's kind of what I was thinking, yeah. Because it does show the sphere, and then it shows the maps. And then this appear, and again, you would know more than I would, it appears that where this is located, it would be deemed their urban corridor?
Yes, it is along an urban corridor. Yes.
Okay. And so, let me jump back to page 122. Sorry, give me a minute.
Commissioner Villanueva, can you tell me where you're at? And that, are you looking at the master plan?
Yes, I'm at, I am on page 120. Well, initially, I was on page 102, and now I'm jumping to page 122.
Thank you.
And 122 shows the policies and the type of relationships and uses in a urban corridor. And this is, this, the change would kind of obviously fall outside of the, you know, so for example, let me explain this a little bit better. So the urban corridor, as I see here, it says overall mix, a broad mix of higher intensity uses will be supported in urban corridors, including but not limited to retail, commercial, so on and so forth, gaming, existing non-restricted gaming uses and non-restricted community amenities, so on and so forth. So this very much seems appropriate, given that it's in the urban corridor. But if we, and, I'm sorry, and you may, again, understand this better than I do. But if we change this, if we change it from SMU to, sorry, a lot going on. So if we change it from urban mixed use to suburban mixed use, how does that get impacted? Or does it, maybe it doesn't get impacted?
So the, the structure plan is, it's, I mean, it's master plan generally is a guiding policy document. The structure plan designations were never contemplated per the property. So if you imagine looking at that map really far away and, and it all blurring together. So there's a lot of flexibility in, in how we implement that, the, the structure plan particularly. And the reason I'm pointing out that this is at the tail end of that urban corridor, is this really a place that we want to prioritize some of the enhanced pedestrian environments that we're looking for downtown or further down along the corridor? We still obviously want to meet minimum code requirements, and general commercial provides for that. But urban mixed, or mixed use urban, like, really prioritizes it to a point where it may not be appropriate anymore for the context of the neighborhood, especially particular to the, to the master plan and the zoning across the street, which, which has much, much less intense standards.
Okay, and I have one more clarifying question if I can.
Please, go ahead.
Sorry again if I am confusing these things. So the, okay, so we're going from a master plan amendment from a 6.88 acres of urban mixed use to suburban mixed use. And the, within the sphere of influence, are they each, are they both appropriate? Or is one more appropriate than the other? Or does it matter?
So staff is arguing that suburban mixed use would be more appropriate because it's at the tail end of that urban corridor. And the relationship to surrounding zoning districts, it's more compatible based on the development standards.
Okay, so now I'm gonna, I'm gonna let someone else talk while I go look into what you just said.
Please do.
So I have a question.
Commissioner Rorimer, go ahead.
Thank you. I, you're saying it's at the tail end of the Mill Street urban corridor. Explain to me RTC's plan, which is for intensification of that same corridor. So how can we talk about downzoning and de-intensifying something that the regional transit system is trying to create more intensification? transit system is trying to create more intensification? Walk me through that.
So RTC is definitely involved, they're, they're working on a project right now to, to widen, in fact, increase, increase the, from my understanding, is that they are increasing the width, they're widening Mill Street, which creates more of that auto-oriented environment, kind of moves us away, a little bit away from the pedestrian-oriented environment. They are definitely improving the safety along that corridor with pedestrian improvements. But the existing development in the area doesn't really provide for the opportunity for expanded sidewalks, pedestrian amenities, and those things aren't required currently on the southern side of, of the, of Mill Street. So although I, I think there are improvements going in RTC, and there's, there's transit stops that are important, I think, for this mixed employment, mixed employment master plan and zoning that's, that's in the area, I mean, for, for our workforce, necessarily driving all that we're looking for in the mixed-use urban district, I don't think is as appropriate. And I think that there's an argument, as you said, that general commercial with the reduction in density actually will provide for a better opportunity for those uses to establish, because it's, downzoning has the impact, I mean, potentially has the impact to decrease prices, maybe bring it into more, bring the properties into an opportunity for, for development to, or redevelopment to occur, that may be more appropriate for, for the area, because currently it's industrial.
Please, Commissioner Rohrmeier, Mike wanted to jump in, no problem, you can go back.
Commissioner Rohrmeier, for the record, Mike Reilly, Planning Manager, I would like to make one clarification on the structure plan. It appears that the structure plan, that the mixed-use area actually ends at the GSR, this would be in the industrial logistic employment area that extends to Terminal Way. So it's actually identified in the structure plan as a less intense area.
This property, sorry.
Commissioner Rohrmeier, if you wanted to continue, you may.
Yeah, I just was trying to understand if there was a goal through this pedestrian safety and corridor safety RTC initiative to create better connection between the airport as a tourist destination and the Grand Sierra as taking transit using other means by just automobile, or if, if your understanding of this connection is something different.
Well, I, I think that there's already a strong, I mean, in my opinion, there's a strong connection, there are two routes that are along Mill Street, which, and then there is at least one route and two stops that exist within the GSR facility itself. So I don't think that a transition to suburban mixed-use would, would hinder that, that development by RTC. And suburban mixed-use also talks about areas that are, may not be in the, like, immediately ready for the high-intensity development that we want to see in, in areas closer to the core of the city. So I, I think that this area being, now in the structure plan, more closely aligned with the industrial logistics area for this, for this, these properties, and being within the, the context of the other designations, we feel it's appropriate.
Commissioner Sarah, please.
Sure, thank you, Chair. Thank you, fellow commissioners, two, maybe a two-folder for Carter and then one for the applicant's representative. Is, is the project along Mill Street, the RTC capacity and safety project, is that the one you're referring to?
Yes, correct.
So, thanks, Carter. Is this a zone change, like a prerequisite for that project to be successful as being envisioned?
It would not impact their capacity to, either way, to, to construct the project. I believe that already, we would probably have to reduce the sidewalk width to what already GC would all require, or would allow, or the minimums, rather.
Okay, great, thanks, Carter. And the second part to that is, Commissioner Veltow already touched on, like, the communication between the applicant and the stakeholder GSR, or at least tried to highlight what was going on there. Has staff communicated or been in, in contact with GSR as a large stakeholder in that community? And the second part to that is, does a zone change require or kind of demand such conversations to occur with large stakeholders before a change is made?
So obviously, the GSR is within the noticing distance, so they, they do get notice, and they receive two notices.
Okay.
There's a neighborhood advisory board meeting, and staff, members of the staff did have a, an in-person meeting where, where things were discussed, I wasn't a part of that. But, so there was some engagement to some extent. For the second question, master plan amendments do actually have an additional neighborhood meeting requirement that was held yesterday. Beyond that, there's not anything that says the larger you are, the more engaged you get to be, or we have to engage with you more. So it's, it's equitable process, obviously, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Carter. Last one, if I may.
Okay, good, yeah, please.
Was there any feedback at that NAV meeting yesterday, or was there any kind of?
I'll defer to the, the applicant's representative.
Marty Harson, Architect, again, thanks, Manny. The, really not any further communication in yesterday's meeting. You know, we're talking about a fairly small sliver of land that's backed up to the GSR's pond, so, just trying to do the best for our client, that's about it.
Understood. Well, I have you here, sir, I did have one question for you. Earlier, you had mentioned, and correct me if I'm wrong here, that this would be the fourth facility?
Oh, no, that's not me.
No?
No, my, my, that's the owner's representative of the building.
Okay.
Yeah. You want to speak?
Oh, that is correct, thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah.
Hey, hey, sorry for the mix-up there.
No worries, Ken Crawford.
So you, you had mentioned that this would be the fourth facility, is that correct?
Yeah, so in approximately 2012, I designed and went through Sparks City Council for unanimous approval for American Target Sports.
Okay.
I was part of the, and hired by Debbie for Reno Guns and Range, so I was the development on that one, and that facility backs up to an apartment complex, so there's, you know, a lot of safety concerns there, noise, all that kind of stuff.
Probably kind of going towards my question, I don't mean to cut you off there, but just to kind of get to it, is, of those facilities, how many are adjacent to a casino or in the proximity of a casino?
No, none, sir. That's why this one is so good, it's not adjacent to anything.
Okay, all right, thank you so much, just clarifying question there.
Yeah, no worries, thank you.
If I may, Carter, just a question for you. So master plan amendment, it makes sense to me, and I appreciate your analysis section, you cover that pretty well, and I guess you kind of covered the reason for going to general commercial, and that was, when I first read this, and even tonight, right now, I'm still not connecting with why would we go to GC, and then why that, and then also, did you factor in, I guess what I'm trying to say is having GC next to a casino, I've yet to see us have that ever come in front of us before, so just trying to understand, one, why GC, even though it obviously conforms with the SMU as stated, but, you know, what your thought process is and what that looks like?
Well, I think if, if a suburban mixed-use zone was submitted with, or GC, I think we would have accepted it, or had the same perspective. Probably more GC, again, because of those development standards, that we have this interesting adjacency against mixed employment, which has the much lower intensity height and story requirements, and, and no, no capacity for residential. So that, I think that, from a unique perspective, I don't think we have a lot of opportunities for GC, because most of our hotel casino activities are more towards the core.
Right.
In this case, there's, we have one that's directly abutting a, a lower intensity zone.
Yeah, and that was the part of just trying to connect with you here, I, I know it probably isn't easy for you with this uniqueness of the Grants Sierra as a location, but thank you, I'll put some more thought into it, appreciate it. Commissioner Villanueva, please.
Yeah, for you, Carter. First, I, I do want to say thank you for your comments, I, all engagement, equal engagement, doesn't matter how big or small, so that's very much appreciated, but you know, I don't care about that, I always evaluate each application pretty fairly, but, and I always am very critical whenever I see a master plan amendment come forward, just because it means that we're changing something that we put a lot of effort and time into when considering 20 years into the future of how our city's going to look and operate. And so, and it is quite surprising here, because I'm, so I'm looking at the urban mixed-use, and then I'm looking at the suburban mixed-use, and under urban mixed-use, it's things like mixed, so things that are considered appropriate, and you know this, I'm not doing this for you, but things that are considered appropriate in urban mixed-use under the master plan are MU, mixed-use urban, mixed-use downtown, midtown commercial, mixed-use midtown residential, multifamily, parks, railways, and open space, public facilities, planned unit development, specific plan district. Then we go to suburban mixed-use, and it's things like multifamily, multifamily 21, multifamily 30, neighborhood commercial, general commercial, professional office. It's very much a, it is a, you referenced it earlier, what was the term you used, like lesser?
Less intense, or?
Less intense, yeah, it's, it is very much less intense, which is quite odd, given the area, it's right by a freeway, where is it? It's by a freeway, it's on Mill Street, which is very much industrial, and there's a lot going on there. Mill is well-known for, it's where, not warehouses, but it's auto mechanics, and it's window tinting services, and so on and so forth, so the compatibility part still kind of gets me.
Suburban mixed-use, so maybe to bring it back to some, some historical context about what suburban mixed-use replaced. A lot of our suburban mixed-use are located outside on the, these corridors, like South Virginia Street, North Virginia Street above the university, that have a lot of different adjacencies. We see South Virginia Street, that there are some, there's a lot of adjacencies right to, adjacent to residential. So multifamily 30, with the suburban mixed-use, might make more sense in certain areas, because it, it transitions down to those. But in the same way, up in North Virginia Street and along Mill Street, we have a lot of adjacencies with, with industrial context, and we, we don't want to, it's still a mixed-use zone, we don't, or land use designation, we don't, we still, we want to provide these transitions into these neighborhoods, so, so that's why I think there's a, there's a broad difference between, because GC and, we wouldn't put GC next to single-family residential, but there's a lot of SMU that would abut single-family residential in, in areas in South Virginia Street. So although the master plan, at a high level, could allow for some of these lower intense, well, multifamily 30 is still pretty high intensity, I wouldn't be able to support multifamily 30 here, because of its adjacency to an industrial. But GC is, is what's on the table today, and that, and that's, we would be able to support it based on the, the intensity conversation on development, development standards and uses.
Okay, thank you. I don't know that I'm convinced, but thank, I do, it's a very thorough explanation, so thank you.
Thank you, Mike, please.
Can I make a clarification, once again, Mike Reilly? I stand corrected, Carter was correct, that the mixed-use designation actually ends at this property boundary. I went into our mapping system, we got some, something with much higher resolution than than what's shown in the master plan. Everything to the south of this property, basically, to the, to the Greg Street-Terminal Way intersection is where it ends, the properties to the south are in that, the, the lower intensity designation that I stated before.
Okay, what's the name of that designation, just for my education?
That is, I got too many screens going.
I know.
Give me just a second here.
I'm looking at all.
That would be the industrial logistics employment area designation.
And that's less intense?
Yes, it is.
Oh, interesting, okay, thank you.
It's actually, it's on the border between mixed-use and industrial logistics, so again, with that, the structure plan far out, it's kind of a melding of all those designations, and that's how we look at it.
Okay. No further questions?
Okay, great. Commissioner Veltow, you've been quiet for a minute, you have any more questions?
No questions, just whenever we're ready to move into discussion.
Okay. Commissioners, any other questions? Happy to move into discussion.
Yeah.
Please do. Yeah, please do, Commissioner Veltow.
I, I want to say first, I really want to compliment Carter in his explanation, I don't think any of us were asking him easy questions, and it very much shows he has a clear command of the master plan, the policies, the goals, and everything, so I just want to say, good job on the presentation, I would always appreciate hearing your applications and hearing the way you present things. You know, on this application, I think I differ than, than, than the city on this point, where I don't think I can support this application, because I don't think it's conforming, and I think it's inconsistent with the master plan. You know, if you just look at a map, the surrounding parcels are urban mixed-use, mixed-use, and if we're changing the zoning of that, this, this set of parcel, this one parcel, that alone, I think, makes it inconsistent. But beyond that, I think it's inconsistent with what the master plan tells us we should prioritize. You know, guiding principles, one, deals with resilient and local and regional economies and creating a business-friendly environment. You know, I'm not convinced that the potential allowed uses are consistent with us having a strong regional and local economy. Guiding principle three tells us to look at economic development and tourism, and again, some of the proposed uses and what's prohibited are not consistent with that, that principle. You know, I'm concerned with what is permitted and what is prohibited. Some of the permitted uses are gun range and chemical processing. I, I understand that there's, would potentially be a need for a CUP in the event that those were permitted uses, but the potential to allow them is, is really concerning to me, is really concerning to me, and I don't think that would be consistent with what, what we should be prioritizing or what the master plan does. As far as what's prohibited, that is more concerning to me, because one of the guiding principles tells us to encourage economic development and tourism, yet this proposed zoning prohibits hotels with non-restricted gaming licenses, hotel condominiums, cannabis dispensaries, warehouse and distribution, and private community centers, which goes to the guiding principle four, which is the vibrant neighborhood centers and mixed-use development. You know, those are some inconsistencies I struggle with. I, I also, independent of those findings, I can't make a finding of pedestrian safety, given the potential allowance of a gun range. I understand, again, this would require a CUP, but the potential for that, especially considering there's a large resort that's adjacent, adjacent to what could be a proposed gun range, creates a definite safety threat, and, you know, we're too close to October 1, and this happening at a casino in Las Vegas, for me to think that this is a safe option. And I, I understand we're only looking at the allowed uses and what the master plan requires, so this isn't necessarily a part of my assessment for denying the project, for proposing denying the project, but we'd be foolish not to acknowledge that GSR has just announced a significant improvement to its property, and that this area is drastically being developed. So if we are going to change the zoning to prohibit things that could be permitted, and would be consistent with how this area is developing, I, I'd be really concerning about supporting that. So, so because of that, you know, I would be opposed to the recommendation of staff, but I, again, I appreciate the presentation, and I appreciate all the questions that I've been able to get answered.
Thank you. Commissioner Armstrong, discussion?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so I largely sort of echo a lot of Commissioner Veltow's concerns. The thing I had a hard time with, in the staff report, it states, within the vicinity, there's ample transit stops conducive to urban mixed-use designation, but the nature of the existing uses does not yet support the type of setting an urban corridor contemplates. I think the goal of the master plan designation that is currently in place is to eventually see that surrounding area support that kind of urban mixed-use designation. I have a hard time supporting a downward transition from urban mixed-use despite staff's recommendation. I agree that use is allowed by right in that designation, I think that Commissioner Villanueva had walked through, make more sense in the area, especially in light of the GSR's expansion plans. I also have some discomfort around the allowable uses and the downzoning, in particular, the gun range. I understand that it would eventually go to a CUP, but I think over the course of the hearing, we've sort of seen that the ultimate goal is that it will just come back here for a CUP, for a gun range. I view this as a significant departure from the existing master plan, and I think that the current master plan designation is actually the most appropriate for the area, and I would have a hard time deviating from that. For those reasons, I'll also be... For those reasons, I'll also be in opposition. Thank you.
Commissioner Roramire, please.
Yes, I'd like to thank both Commissioner Veltow and Commissioner Armstrong for eloquently articulating my sentiments exactly. I do not see this as a location to be having less intensification of land use. I don't see this as a suburban character. This is at the interchange of a freeway, very close to the proximity of a major regional freeway intersection and right next to the largest casino in our northern Nevada. So I'm sorry, I will not be supporting this project or this request to rezone.
Commissioner Dracula, I echo the statements of the previous commissioners. I couldn't quite get there, not only at the deviation from the master plan, but to the rezoning to the general commercial. Commissioner Basara, please.
Dito.
Commissioner Villanueva.
Yeah, a lot of what was said, I do, I mean, this is a request for master plan amendment, so doesn't matter what it was going to be. I do appreciate the firearm safety that you guys, you know, the efforts you take to be safe with firearms and your efforts to educate. My no vote is strictly with respect to the amendment. I just I'm very hard pressed to change the master plan in general and certainly not in this case because for because of those statements made by my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioner Veltow. Looks like you may want to entertain a motion.
Yes, happy to make the motion or making a motion in the matter of case number LDC two, four dash zero, 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 two, zero, zero. Let me make a question actually for for Mike. Should this be two separate motions because there's a master plan amendment and a rezoning? Or is this just one motion to deny? If that's my motion.
This is Jasmine made for the record. I think you can make it as one motion in this case.
Thank you so much. Apologies in the matter of case number LDC two, four dash zero, 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 two, zero. I move to deny the request for a master plan amendment and a zoning map amendment because I cannot make the findings for conforming use, consistency with the master plan, or safety as a finding. And for that reason, I make make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to deny the proposed motion. Commissioner Basara, look like we need to speak?
Just a clarifying question. Oftentimes, we're encouraged to vote in the affirmative to make it clear that something is denied.
I'll clarify once we get the yes. So we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Basara to deny. So we do have a motion to deny and deny the adoption of the master plan amendment and also approve the master plan amendment and zoning amendment. So a vote of aye is in support of denial of the motion. Does that make is that clear?
No. There is one.
Your vote of aye is to deny the proposed motion in alignment with Commissioner Veltow's statement. All in favor of denying the motion? Any opposed to the denial? Seeing none, the proposed motion is denied. Thank you for your time.
Just to clarify, that was the proposed application is denied? Just for the record.
Correct, correct.
Correct, okay, great, thank you.
It moves to council as a denial, a recommendation for denial, so they have the final say.
Do you want me to read the notice?
It's not an appealable item. It goes to council regardless.
Okay.
And it'll go forward as a denial.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we're now opening item 5.5, case number LDC two, four dash zero, 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 one, nine, Starbucks lighting major deviation.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Savannah Apps. I'm here with Kim Lee Horn and Associates. We're the engineering firm representing our client Rhino Holding Summit on the proposition of a new Starbucks development within the Summit Mall. Our client is Rhino Holding Summit, I think I said that. But we're here today to specifically discuss a major deviation to the proposed site lighting. So while we're here, we're going to go over the site location. I assume most people are familiar with the Summit Mall, but we'll dive into it a bit deeper for those who aren't, as well as the proposed project, what the current site looks like and some of the zoning, the surrounding uses, and then we'll dive into the actual major deviation and then the lighting plan. So the site plan or the site location is in South Reno. The Summit Mall is located kind of in a triangle of development at the intersection of I-580 South Virginia Street and Mount Rose Highway. A schematic of the Summit Mall is shown to our right. The north arrow is pointing plan right. Some of the popular retail sites at the mall are a Dillard's, Orvis, Century Theaters. We also have some prominent restaurants in the area. For kind of sizing, the Summit Mall is 64 acres, and it was actually originally developed in 2006, and is recently kind of seeing a increase in the amount of out parcel development that's happening at the mall. As you can see, indicated with the orange star on the site, that is our proposed project location. I like to say it's a little island of development amidst a sea of parking stalls. That is a 0.97 acre site. So the proposed project runs along Summit Sierra Boulevard, which kind of bisects the Summit Mall. We are proposing a 2,600 roughly 2,600 square foot coffee shop with drive-through access. That's a benefit. If any of you have been to the Summit Mall, you know that the current Starbucks does not have a drive-through, so they're pretty excited for this one. There will also be patio seating along the front and side of the building and quite a bit of parking. In addition, we will be demolishing some of the existing parking stalls that are at the Summit Mall in order to make way for this drive-through. So there are substantial parking stalls associated with this development. And then there will be ADA access along Summit Sierra Boulevard to the north and south. As you can see here, the existing site is an undeveloped out parcel. It's a roughly graded pad. There is some existing parking, some existing landscaping. Much of the existing landscaping will be maintained, albeit graded and then re-landscaped, but the general schematic remains the same. The zoning we'll touch on on the next slide, but it is mixed use suburban. So as we can see here, the entire 64 acre site of the Summit Mall is mixed use suburban. We see a lot of the similar uses that are compatible with this with the Starbucks that's being proposed. Once again, the Dillard's, some entertainment areas such as the Cinemark. I believe there's a escape room, Orvis, Lululemon, Apple, a big retail space. I do want to note, because we want to be mindful of any residents in the area, there are some apartments, as you can see right here, and these are some newer apartments because we want to be mindful of the residents, and this is a major deviation to lighting. We did a quick elevation analysis, and the apartments are actually placed 40 feet higher than the proposed Starbucks is. So just being mindful of that, but we don't foresee that being an issue because of the elevation difference. So with that, we'll jump into the major deviation. Under City of Reno Land Development Code, mixed use suburban areas are allowed 100,000 lumens per acre of development. Because we we sit on 0.97 acres, this allows us 97,000 lumens under this code. The site was developed with Starbucks standard lighting specifications in mind, and that is why all of the lighting was proposed as it is. So this totals 134,008 lumens. For any more lay audience members, you may be asking what is a lumen? It's kind of an arbitrary or more arbitrary measurement of light, but essentially it's a measure of the total amount of visible light from a light source. Diving into the lighting plan a bit further, we can see the site plan once again to orient us. Summit Sierra Boulevard is on the right-hand side of the the screen with access to the Starbucks from Summit Sierra on that right side. Along the perimeter of the site, you can see these red dots, each of which are indicating a different lighting source. All of those red dots along the perimeter are a standard light pole. You can see that indicated with this black, black standard light structure. These are similar to what you would see in any parking lot environment. Honestly, a little bit smaller than what you would typically see in like a Walmart parking lot. The idea being to place those on the perimeter of the site to increase lighting around the parking lots and improve the safety of patrons who are navigating to and from the site from their vehicles. And then additionally, we have a larger light as well located at the trash enclosure, reason being for any people who work at Starbucks who need to get to the trash enclosure late at night or early in the morning, either for their closing or opening shifts, and just ensuring that they feel safe walking to and from. Then in addition to that, we have strip LED lighting that will be along the side of the building as well as right where they where patrons can pick up their orders at the order window, and that will be under canopy, under canopies that are proposed along the building. It'll all be downward facing lighting that illuminates the walking path, especially because we do have ADA accessible stalls right here at the north of the building. And then additionally, on the building facade, there are a few wall sconces that are being proposed, both of which are shown here as an example. I do want to emphasize that all of the light will be facing down, which is which follows the City of Reno code, so there won't be any lighting that's illuminating the sky. It'll all be for the purposes of light maintaining a well-lit walking path. So with that, I want to say thank you, and we'll be available for any questions.
Thank you so much. Looks like we'll get a presentation from Leah.
Yes. Thank you, Savannah. That was a great presentation. Made my job easy. All right, well, good afternoon, Commission, or good evening. Leah Picati, Associate Planner with the City of Reno Development Services, and this evening I am presenting the application for a major deviation for the lighting at Starbucks and Summit Mall. As Savannah stated, the project site is an approximate 0.97 acre site located pretty much smack dab in the middle of Summit Mall parking lot. You can see on my map that it's highlighting the majority of the parking lot there, and that's because the applicant is in the process of going through a boundary line adjustment to create that 0.97 acre parcel. So as you're looking at these maps and you're thinking, wow, that's a large 0.97 acres, that's why it shows it that way. We know that today's request is to exceed the 100,000 lumens per acre site lighting standard by less than 50%. It is the request is for approximately 38% deviation from that standard. Here you can see the subject site is located in the mixed use suburban zoning district, and the key issues analyzed in this request were the overall site design and compatibility with surrounding developments and uses. Another thing I need to point out here is that all we're really looking at here is lighting. The drive-through portion of it does require an entitlement, and that minor conditional use permit was approved in June of 2023. So any concerns related to the drive-through or traffic or how people are navigating in or out of the site really doesn't have anything to do with today's request. Today's request is strictly about the lighting on this site. And as you can see, the applicant has supplied this lumen plan here, and Savannah's presentation pointed out the lights, but the three I wanted to point out are these three internal ones. And these are really going to have the highest lighting output of any of them on the site. Each one of these is about 18,000 lumens, but they're placed strategically in the center of the site for a few different reasons, and one of those is safety. But the other thing is that because this is in the middle of a parking lot, and you've got that street running along the eastern side of it, there really isn't a lot of lighting at this site or around this site because all of the nearest businesses are located a significant distance away. I think the nearest business here is about 250 feet away. And we do believe that there's going to be pedestrian activity on this site because people will be walking from one side of Summit Mall over to the other ones, over to the other stores. We've got the movie theater across the street, and in addition to that, I'm pretty sure we have a hotel going in kind of southeast of where this is as well. So we do anticipate that there will be pedestrian activity associated with that use as well. In terms of compatibility with surrounding development, staff looked at the same thing that Savannah was pointing out there, that you do have some residential uses there to the southwest. But again, when we looked at the type of light fixtures that were going to be used without those fully cut off fixtures and the elevation change between where the Starbucks is going to be located and those existing homes, it shouldn't have any impact on them at all. They sit about 40 feet higher than where this is going to be, and the tallest light poles, I believe, are going to be about 25 feet. On the board, you can see the recommended findings for major deviations. Staff was able to make all of these findings. Shouldn't have a significant impact on nearby properties, definitely going to improve safety in the parking area, doesn't constitute a special privilege because any other properties can also apply for that same major deviation, and it should have no detriment to public health, safety, or welfare. In fact, it should increase public health, safety, and welfare. Recommended motion is on the board. I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah, appreciate it.
Sure.
Now we'll now go to the Commissioners for disclosures. Commissioner Veltow, please.
Commissioner Veltow, no disclosures.
Commissioner Villanueva.
Commissioner Villanueva, familiar with the site, shop at the site.
Commissioner Armstrong.
Commissioner Armstrong, same disclosures.
Commissioner Basara, same disclosures.
Commissioner Roramire, no disclosures.
Commissioner Dracula, familiar with the site? I think we did get one email in opposition. Snuck in there, just for reference. All right, we will now open it up for a public comment. I see no request to speak forums.
Correspondence was received and forwarded to the planning commission. No voicemails were received, and there is no one on Zoom.
Okay. Anybody in the chambers wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Open it to the Commissioners for questions of staff or the applicant. Please.
Clarifying question for the applicant. Did you say this is Starbucks Starbucks is standard lumen? So this is across the board what they consistently use at all their locations?
So the lighting that's being proposed is standard for Starbucks in the essence of how much lighting they like to see. But as for lumens in particular, I think that that's dependent on the size of their site. So definitely because we do have a lot more parking stalls associated with this site than we would see standard. I think the code requirement is 12, and we're proposing nearly 40. It is increasing just the the amount of lighting that the site would need for just the general size.
So like the number, like the so I'm not a lumen expert, but like the number, the number of like lights in general on this side may it is it's it's not like a consistent number that Starbucks uses generally, it's just because of this site, but another site may have a different number. But the lumen itself is the same?
Yes, the lumen itself is the same. The lighting fixtures are the same barring any like jurisdictional restrictions on that as what we're talking about today. But I think that they actually typically go under foot candles, which is not what our code currently restricts, but it's kind of an associated measurement that they would that it would fall under. So yes, they do try to maintain a specific amount of lighting standard across like any of their walking paths and yeah, if that answers your question.
And in the photo that you had of the three samples, is that what they're going to look like, the different type of lighting?
Yeah, that's those example or those photos were exactly from the specifications that have been provided, and that was submitted in our building permit application.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Basara, please.
Sure, for staff, maybe you could shed some light on something.
That's pretty good.
Well, first off, the three example lights were great. I was kind of thinking of that for the earlier project that we were discussing, but for these lights, since they are out of since they are deviation, do they typically go off at night, like at some point when they close shop?
Yes.
Okay.
Exactly. So Reno municipal code requires that all of the lights be extinguished between the hours of 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. However, if the business closes earlier than 10:00 PM, then they have to turn the lights off when the business closes. So yes, there will still be security lighting at night overnight, but the the majority of lights will be extinguished.
Okay, thank you.
Move into discussion or a motion?
Commissioner Rohrmeier, just a quick point of discussion. The lighting, I think, actually fits for, given the mall setting. I'm very, I'm so happy to see more coming to that sea of parking, so appreciate that. Thank you.
Great.
I can make a motion. I'm looking for the motion. Based upon, excuse me, with respect to case number LDC 24-00019, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the major deviation, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
We have a motion.
Commissioner Rohrmeier, second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Good luck. Thank you. All right, we'll go to item 5.6, case number LDC 24-00017, the US 395 Exit 76 Gas Station and Warehouse Amendment. Looks like we'll get a presentation from the applicant. Please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Josh Hendo. I'm here with Kim Lee Horn, representing our client Circle K for a proposed Circle K gas station in North Reno. Our site is located off of Sted Boulevard in North Reno, just south of the freeway and north of North Virginia Street. Quick summary of the zoning. It's mixed-use suburban zoning with the land use designation of suburban mixed-use. There was a previous conditional use permit on the site last year that was approved, which included a request for drive-through facility in mixed-use suburban, fills greater than 10 feet, crossing of a major drainageway, and gas station use in mixed-use suburban. We're here today for a conditional use permit with the requests of hours of operation between the hours of 11:00 and 6:00, so 24-hour use, as well as drive-through facility in the mixed-use suburban zoning. As you can see on the site map here, the surrounding uses are certainly compatible. There's industrial, as well as some residential to the north, which would bode well for the use proposed of gas station and drive-through food facility. The Amazon fulfillment center is actually just across the street. And as you'll see in the next slide, our site proposes high-speed diesel fueling, so a lot of truck traffic will be using the site. Here's some site photos showing existing conditions and topography. And here we have a preliminary site plan. So there's a convenience store with a drive-through restaurant on the south side. The drive-through is shown there. It's kind of hard to read, but through this conditional use permit, we've shown that there's sufficient capacity to meet City of Reno code. The standard fueling stations are in the front on the right-hand side. Access is off of Sted Boulevard, and then there's high-speed diesel fueling in the back. Oftentimes, truck drivers will drive through the night, and so that's part of the reason that the 24-hour use is proposed, so that they can have access to buy anything they'd like at the convenience store. Here we have a preliminary landscape plan showing some of the landscaping proposed. There is increased landscaping requirements along Sted Boulevard to help with screening for the drive-through. This is a preliminary rendering of the building, including the, right now it's proposed subway, to be determined on the final user. As well as a preliminary rendering of the fuel canopy. Thank you all for your time, and I'll be available for questions.
Thank you very much. Looks like we'll now get a presentation from Leah again. Hello.
Yes. Again, Commissioners, my name is Leah Picari, Associate Planner with City of Reno Development Services. And this afternoon, or this evening, I keep saying that, I am presenting the application for this US 395 Exit 76 Gas Station and Warehouse Amendment. I just want to point out that the warehouse portion of this is not being contemplated in this amendment. That's why you didn't see any information on that. That still retains all of the original entitlement and the original conditions, as does all of the grading and the major drainageway stuff that's going on. So all we're really looking at in this amendment tonight is the 24-hour use and changing the location of the drive-through from being south of where it's proposed to being where it is now. So here you can see the 4.81-acre site. The little piece down to the south of the site and the larger piece off to the west of the site were part of that original entitlement. Originally, it was all one parcel, but it's been split into three. That drive-through was originally proposed on that smaller piece that's on the corner of Sted and Virginia, and now it's being moved on to this main 4.81-acre parcel. Subject site is located in the mixed-use suburban zoning district and is mostly surrounded by mixed-use suburban, industrial, commercial, and then the GC off to the west there. Key issues analyzed in this review were overall site design, compatibility of a 24-hour use with surrounding developments and use, and roadway and traffic, which I'll get to why we're talking about that here in just a second. So here you can see the overall site design. Staff did work with the applicant on the placement of that drive-through, and it does meet the minimum requirements for a drive-through, which is 140 feet of stacking space behind the window where the order is picked up. I do want to point out, too, that what we're looking at there is a private drive that's going to eventually extend up to that warehouse property off of Sted Boulevard. So if for any reason this drive-through ends up stacking out into it, it's 370 feet from Sted Boulevard. So if it does spill out, it's going to spill out into that private drive rather than spilling out into one of our roadways. Regarding compatibility with surrounding development and uses, we have mostly industrial uses. We got self-storage. We got the wrecking yard. We've got more self-storage. And then we've got non-conforming residence that's located there on the corner of Virginia and Sted, and then we've got a mobile home park. After staff looked at the overall zoning in this area, what is currently there and what could potentially be there? Staff feels that the 24-hour use is compatible with those surrounding developments. It's also worth pointing out that most of these parcels are industrial zoning. And if you end up with any kind of warehouse or storage and distribution, those are all allowed 24-hour by right in those zones. So we may eventually, as this area develops, see more 24-hour uses in this area. All of the original conditions of approval were just transferred over into this entitlement. I didn't change anything, except that I added two conditions, and these were based on the engineer's review of the traffic study that was provided with this application. And basically, it's going to require an NDOT encroachment permit, which it would have required that in the first place. It just wasn't conditioned. And our engineering staff just felt that it would be more comfortable with conditioning that. So I added condition number 14 to require them to get that encroachment permit. And then condition number 15 is we want them to update that traffic impact study, because the uses that they cited in that were, I think, like gas station and convenience store. And engineering felt that they needed to evaluate that with a use that was more similar to that. And let me tell you what that use was. Hold on. It was, so they based it on convenience store and gas station. And we felt that they should base it on gasoline and service station. So the applicant is going to update that traffic study, and any roadway mitigation or improvements that are recommended from that will be provided from the applicant. And also, they're going to have to provide documentation of NDOT's approval to the city. So that's what those two conditions added in, and that was really just the review from our engineering department on what they thought that this application can use. So the conditional use permit amendment review findings, which are the same as the conditional use permit findings, are on the board. Staff analyzed all of these findings and was able to make all of the findings. Recommended motion is on the board, and I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Appreciate it. Commissioners for disclosures, Commissioner Veltow.
Commissioner Veltow, familiar with the site? No disclosures.
Commissioner Rohrmeier.
Familiar with the location? No disclosures.
Commissioner Rosera, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Armstrong, familiar with the site?
Commissioner Villanueva, no disclosures.
Commissioner Dracula, familiar with the site? All right, we will now open it up to public comment. Michelle, anything?
No request to speak forums, no correspondence or voicemails received, and there is no one on Zoom.
All right, anybody in the chambers wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and move to the Commissioners for questions of staff or applicant. Commissioner Veltow, required on this side. You?
No questions.
Discussion or a motion?
Ready to make a motion.
I was going to make a comment, because I wanted to channel Commissioner Muniz and just say,
Please do.
This is what we want to see in the North.
Well played.
Go ahead with your motion, Commissioner Veltow.
Appreciate it. In the matter of case number LDC 24-00017, based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the conditional use permit amendment, subject to conditions listed in the staff report, and I can make all the findings.
We have a motion.
Second. Commissioner Villanueva, the second.
All good. We have a motion and a second. Any other further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes unanimously. Good luck with your project. Thank you. All right. Closing item five, moving to item number six, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report. Mike?
No report this evening.
All right. Closing item six, moving to item seven, staff announcements.
Just a couple of quick announcements. I'll kind of blend everything into one here. Just a reminder that our next meeting will be held at the Sparks City Council Chambers. So just be aware of that, back on our normal, on the 20th. And then the only other news I have to report is that the Notables SPD that you recently approved was that recommendation was upheld by the City Council at their meeting yesterday.
Cool. Thank you. Closing item seven, moving to item eight, Commissioner's suggestions for future agenda items. Seeing none, closing item eight, moving to item number nine, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, do we have any general public comment? Request to speak forums?
No correspondence, no voicemails were received, no request to speak forums, and no one on Zoom.
Anybody in the chambers wish to speak on general public comment? Seeing none, we will close. Item number nine, public comment, move to item 10, adjournment.
Still moved.
All right, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
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 Have a great night, everyone.